In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORC and may be recorded by all the local media. Please rise for the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The board reports on all of the new business together. Mr. Massey, starting today?
I have no new business.
Listen, Valas.
I have no board member reports, but just a couple of points of interest. I'd just like to say that it's disappointing to not see candidates for our select board not in these budget hearing meetings. Very important, if you're going to take this seat, you should be at these budget hearings so that when you sit in the seat, you know what to know. So just a friendly suggestion that you'll be listening and paying attention to these budget hearings. Also, there was a post on social media claiming that this board and the TA did not answer emails. And I just want to set that record straight. Our TA works very hard. He does his best to answer emails. He has a lot on his plate. He does a good job of getting back to people when he can. And this board also, we all have busy lives and jobs of our own, and we do our best. We do our best to get back to people. And just the person that said that has never sent an email. So it looked like it was called out to the whole board, and I've never had an email that I had to answer. So just wanted to straighten that out. That's all.
Can you just come down? Mr. Wallen?
No, nothing, no updates.
Wow. Mr. O'Leary?
Few things, I guess. One is, you know, it's tax time, and for our senior citizens who qualify for the circuit breaker, and I know Representative Jones had an article in the transcript this past week explaining it a little bit. And again, I do sell taxes, tax returns a year here, and a number of people, more and more people are qualifying as the tax rates increase here or the tax base increases, and these taxes go much more. You are, people in our communities qualify for the circuit breaker. I think last year, again, Mr. Wallen, the Taxation Aid Committee put forth a proposal to this board, and the board endorsed, and it brought to town meeting to allow for a tax break for people who qualify for the tech circuit breaker. I believe that's about four hundred.
It sounded like about four hundred households.
There was about four hundred households in the town of North Reading, probably two years ago in the data that they had, qualify for the circuit breaker. I would anticipate, based on what I've seen this year, you know, more people are qualifying for it. Under the new file that was accepted by town meeting, it started on July 1st, Michael. We have a program in place where even qualify at the 50% of the circuit breaker credit that you get on the state return for tax break on your real estate taxes. So it's important for those of you, again, those are some of the vulnerable people in our community as far as economically vulnerable, seniors who have been here for a long time who qualify, to take advantage of the program that we're going to have after the 1st of July, correct?
Correct.
You know, so I just wanted to highlight that early on in the meeting and spread the word a little bit more. The circuit breaker's been in place for well over 20 years now. It certainly does help our seniors age in place as far as the tax credit that the state has been giving, and I was very proud of the support and all the knowledge which is efforts to bring it to the board and bring it forward to town meeting last year. The widespread support of town meeting to implement the tax break here in North Reading. So take advantage of it, be cognizant of it, and contact the town administrator's office or who's going to be here? Could it be the assessors?
They'll be on, assessor, but they can contact my office first.
Contact the town administrator's office for further details to get a tax break if you qualify for the circuit breaker. The other thing is, just in a way of like what's transpiring, you know, at the national level, someone did mention at the last meeting that things do tend to trickle down to the local level. I mean, we have, and again, nobody's opposed to, I don't know anybody that doesn't think that we should have greater efficiencies in government, whether it be from the national down to the state down to the local level. I don't think there's anybody that is opposed to ensuring that we have proper immigration laws in place. What we're seeing here right now is a universal slashing of federal grants, might have, which is going to have a direct impact trickling on down here in North Reading. But even in addition to that, we're talking about research dollars for health. I mean, as a Kansas survivor, I appreciate the research that was done in order to allow me to be sitting here and being with my family all the time. I have family members who are suffering from, there'll be Parkinson's, they're Alzheimer's. I have a dear friend who just passed away two months ago, who was involved in a trial period, and was using herself as a tool to aid the research. Those fundings are drying up and being pulled away. And we've got dollars to our research institutes, our hospitals, our colleges and universities, and bringing this stuff to a screeching halt. We need to, at the local level, and I know that, you know, our congressional delegation are report by what's happening here, but we need to, you know, call Congress, we need to call the other Congress, we need to call the White House, and let them know that we're opposed to what's happening right now, and it's important that we get active here at the local level. You can't just stand by and let these things happen. Other edicts, where they're forcing colleges and universities taking funds away because students are protesting. So our rights to free speech are being infringed upon right now, and the silence is deafening here at the local. To me, I just think we need to speak up, and we need to say something. And so let's use the platform that we have here to say, you know, we're going to have the political affiliations here. What's happening isn't right.
That's a matter of opinion.
It is a matter of opinion, but it isn't right. Freedom of speech should not be infringed upon. We can have differences of opinion. They should be expressed without having to be worried about whether or not the funding to the university that my kids went to. When I was in college, I protested. My colleges and universities shouldn't have been done so. To me, I think it's a need for us at the local level to be speaking up.
I'll call it again, pay them for a closing order.
You can say it's inappropriate all you want. I'm not looking for a debate. I'm making my statements, and people can say whatever they choose, and I welcome it, and I want to hear it. And I'm not going to, and I'm not going to chastise them, I'm not going to throw them out or anything else. I want to hear it. We should even debate. But again, I'm a local public official, I'm a local citizen, you know, I'm a, I'm an American, and what I'm seeing is a concern, and I'm expressing my opinion here, and yes, I'm using the bully pulpit that I have here to ask people to wake up and just say something. And again, if you want to disagree, that's great. I look forward to hearing the disagreement and another debate in another forum. So I just wanted to say that. The other thing is, is I just wanted to let you know, let the public know, hold on a second, that Tuesday night, March 25th, there's going to be a happy hour for Ukraine at the Parthakary from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Those opposed to the recent decision to abandon our ally and embrace our adversaries are most welcome to attend. Attendees will be encouraged to wear blue and yellow, to make a donation to the Come Back Alive Foundation, which is one of the largest nonprofit organizations and established charities assisting Ukraine's defenders. The organization that's running it is looking to raise $2,000 at the time, and everybody's welcome to attend. So again, that's Tuesday at the Parthakary Ales from 6:00 to 9:00. Come and show your support, if you can make a donation, that's great, we'll be blue and yellow. And other than that, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set. Thank you.
I have nothing to say on this topic, on new, yeah, there's plenty of opinion I got to give on some other things. Public comment. Anyone like to?
You want to go first?
Look at that, how nice.
How nice. Amy Sondra, 24th and 25th St. I wasn't going to say anything until I just listened to what just happened. Politics don't need to come down to the local level that they're coming down. You have a group of people in this town that is bashing, longtime residents, I have screenshots of it, that have been deleted, and it's disgusting what is happening, disgusting. And that's all I'm going to say. Everybody needs to be aware of this group that is bashing. They're bashing candidates that are trying to go for election. It is disgusting what's happening, and it needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mackey?
Kevin Mackey, 18 Adams Street. Just in response to the Anne Schoners, I've emailed Mr. Roberto, I've emailed Lori Anne, I've emailed four or five different departments, and everyone has gotten back to me on a timely basis. So that's my experience, so I just wanted to.
Great to connect.
Thank you. Anyone online, Mr.? Actually, I'm sorry, anyone else? Any? Mr. Roberto?
Not seeing anybody online, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Close the public comment. Next item, please.
Mr. Chairman, through you, next item is a new license, a contractual license for Sukho Cafe LLC at 134 Park Street, Unit 3, and subbuilding that is home to the Hornets' Nest among other businesses. I believe the applicant is here this evening, and I don't know if we want to give them an opportunity just to talk a little bit about their business, please. Does anybody have any business? Come right to that podium there.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Bill Thomas and my business partner Gary. So we'll just be selling coffee. I don't know if you guys are familiar with acai bowls? Acai bowls over there as well. Right next to the Hornets' Nest?
Next to it.
In between the Hornets' Nest and the nail salon. So we'll do acai bowls, coffee, and waffles.
And chai latte.
You said waffles?
Waffles, yeah, yeah.
And chai latte.
Like a waffle.
A Monday morning detox.
That's it. That's all we're doing.
Talk of the town.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
Thank you guys so much. That's all we got.
Excellent. So our license request is only for common virtual license. Perhaps a paperwork in there, their application was in order, and we're prepared to recommend it for vote.
Mr. Massey, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve a common virtual license for Sukho Cafe LLC, 134 Park Street, Unit Number 3, to expire December 31st, 2025, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just make sure, I did verify, you know, my wife is into chai lattes and so before I voted on it, I asked her quite blankly, and I had them, she said, yes, and they're very good, so we're looking forward to it. And what do you anticipate, opening date?
May look next month.
Good luck and congratulations and good luck with your new business. We hope to support you.
Thank you, guys.
Well, we have to vote.
All those in favor?
We didn't, we didn't.
All those in favor?
Aye. Now we.
Thank you, guys. Congratulations. Thanks a lot. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome to stay with the evening, but you don't have.
You don't want.
He's hired.
Yay!
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Do you want to give our update on number eight?
Please.
Three.
Mr. Chairman, just on behalf of the board regarding the board's executive session for ETA zoning, the board would like to inform the public that it has determined that it will not be moving forward with litigation regarding every TA communities at this time, and will continue to monitor the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Number nine.
Mr. Chairman, through you, we have a number of folks who are here this evening with regard to the fire department's deployment analysis. As a, by way of a little bit of background, this was, to go way back, June town meeting last year, the Fire Station Building Committee, in consultation with the fire chief, recommended that we pass over the final phase of funding for fire station renovation and expansion project at the Park Street headquarters. And we indicated at that time that we wanted to further evaluate the need for response on the west side of town, which is something that the fire department undertook utilizing funds that were incurred from the fiscal year 2025, strike that 2024 operating budget. There was quite a bit of work that was done by the Department of Public Works, particularly the Director, Mr. Parisi, and the GIS Coordinator, Danny, he has to help with his last name.
Danny Spine.
Danny Spine, it goes by Danny. Remember Dan and Danny. They did a great job of pulling information together with the fire chief with regard to calls for the fire department here, and I think you're going to see a report here that has probably not surprising information, but some data that is helpful for us as we evaluate the next steps with regard to the fire department, keeping in mind that we are actively looking to add staffing in that department, and we have four additional positions, five actually, that we funded over the past two years. And you have a request before you for this upcoming fiscal year that would add four more positions to it. I'm going to stop, I'm returning with the chief, anything you want to provide for an introduction, and if not, we can go ahead with the presentation.
No, just on behalf of all of us here in MRI, we have Sean with us to give us the overview on the presentation, what MRI has prepared for us. So thank you, Sean. And I'd like to thank the Department of Public Works, especially Director Parisi, for all of his help on this, because he's truly the expert at this, and, you know, I provided the information that I needed to, to make him successful.
Yeah, a lot of great work done in a pretty limited amount of time. Appreciate everybody's efforts. So you have a presentation, I know we're going to need to share that out through Zoom as well.
Okay.
So that folks can see I can go over and help with that.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Sean Murray. I'm a senior consultant with Municipal Resources, Inc., or better known as MRI. And as was introduced in the introduction, MRI was contracted to assist the town of North Reading in doing a deployment analysis. So what I have for you tonight is just a quick overview. We have a 40-plus page report, which really has all the in-depth data and shows what areas we've looked at. The scope of the project and some of the major tasks we completed included a service demand study, review of deployment, response times, target locations, service level demand, staffing, and fire station locations. We also conducted a site visit with the town and had a tour of the community and the existing fire headquarters. We developed a partnership with personnel from the town to create appropriate GIS maps and systems, which is a critical, critical part of any study where you're looking at deployment. Then we also reviewed and analyzed operational data, and the report we've come up with addresses staffing, service demand trends, and the facility needs now and potential future fire station location. Quickly, looking at the community demographics plays a big role in determining these things. And the main part of this slide or importance is that North Reading is seeing an estimated 2.7 increase in their population and basically 5.91% since 2020. This projected continual growth in the population is what contributes to your higher fire and EMS calls. So this is just a quick snapshot from 2013 to 2023, and it just demonstrates that both fire in the red and EMS in the blue calls are increasing year to year. And the increase in EMS or blue calls that you see there is consistent throughout fire service-based EMS. Some of the service demand concerns, fire EMS coverage in some portions of the community is, does not meet response time benchmarks. There are increasing calls for service, multiple calls at the same time or within minutes of each other. There is a significant development occurring in some areas. The response times are longer than in other parts of town, and the single fire station model you currently have is not consistent with the need to improve response times to the community. We did take a tour and look at the existing fire station. This is, this is not new to anyone. Your main fire station is aging. This apparatus space needs, and it is lacking a number of ADA and life safety systems. The apparatus base that you have, obviously, were not designed for today's modern apparatus. The HVA systems are energy inefficient, aged, in need of updating, and your facility is not compliant with national fire protection standards, 1500, 1581, and 1852. And those, those all have to do with life and house safety type areas. And then the dormitories that you currently have are inadequate, and they lack privacy in spaces. So expectations for the quality and quantity of fire and emergency medical services must come from the residents and the taxpayers. It is those people that determine what level of fire protection and EMS response they want in the community. When you have an appropriate deployment of resources, it's critical to the ability of any fire department to effectively, efficiently, and safely fulfill its core mission of public safety. From the perspective of stations and apparatus, there are three main factors that are used to help determine the deployment of resources. Those include response time, travel distance, and call volume. Response time is the most critical factor for fire and emergency incidents. So the primary response time factor, or the most important, is for emergency medical services. We know that irreversible brain damage can occur, the brain is deprived of oxygen for more than four minutes. The, along with that, the potential for successful resuscitation during cardiac arrest decreases exponentially with each passing minute, that CPR or cardiac defib is delayed. And then on the fire side, we know that fire can double in size and intensity every 30 seconds. There's something called flashover. Flashover can occur with five to seven minutes of fire ignition, and is one of the most dangerous events that a firefighter can face. And in other words, what happens is, if there's a fire in the room, the heat level goes so high that the entire room combusts at once. So that's what flashover is, is known for. We also looked at Insurance Services Office, or ISO, and this is a organization which creates public protection classifications, and one of their main areas that they look at is fire departments. And it is this organization that provides data to insurance agencies and underwriters, which allow them to come up with a public protection classification. So basically, they determine the fire department ability to deliver fire service, and they evaluate fire and communication systems, fire department operations, water supplies, and community risk reduction strategies. There are a couple of NFPA standards that also play into it. NFPA 1710 states that the first arriving company shall arrive at the scene of a fire suppressing incident within four minutes. And then EMS incidents, with first responder, a higher level trained personnel should arrive on the scene within four minutes, and advanced life support, such as paramedics, should arrive with, in about eight minutes. So here's a demonstration of some of the data that the team was able to compile. It basically looked back at a five-year period, and up on this map here, you see all the calls for service in the town of Reading. North Reading, I'm sorry. And this, this is a similar slide, and this represents EMS calls for service in the town of North Reading over a five-year period. And in the report, we go into more depth explaining the densities of these areas, and basically, the larger a circle gets, the more calls for service are related to that address or area. Then we took a, what is known as a heat map, and what you see here is, this is a, from fire station headquarters, the actual median response time for the town of North Reading. And as shown on the screen, in the green areas, that is about a zero to four-minute response from fire headquarters, and then the yellow areas represent four to six minutes, and then the orange areas are eight to 10 minutes. What's just as important here is if you look to the left side of the map and you see all those faded dots, that again represents emergency calls as compared to when you look at the rest of the map or off to the right. So after we were able to compile all that data and verify it, that it was accurate, we continued on and made some, we took a look at some various locations of potential fire stations. The dark areas you're seeing on the map is the potentially area, as you can see, we're looking at this Elm Street area for a potential station, and the darker areas is what is the areas that would be improved by having a fire station in that area. And then we went up and we looked at Marblehead, and it's the same situation. If you had a station up in there, you can see this dark green area is what benefits from that station. Next was Havrell Street, and again, very similar to the previous one, where the, the response time is improvement is in this dark area. And it's not, it's not dark in the rest of these areas because some of this is the overlap that you get from headquarters, that's why that's not all. And then again, we went to Main at North Street, and again, this picture depicts the improved response time up in this area, and it does come down this way a little. And again, you'll see the density of calls and incidents in that area. Next, and the next one we looked at was Main Street and Winter. This had similar response time improvements as North Street, and you can also see that it does improve in the southwest corner of North Reading. And then the last one we looked at was Main Street at Park, and again, this one here also provides improvement in response times here and up in that area also. We also took some statistical quantifying data and looked at a number of service calls responded to within four minutes, same with EMS calls. And then we were able to take that data and. And then we were able to take that data and estimate how many additional road miles and how many potential calls could be covered by the different station location. So our recommendations, a recommendation is a new fire station should be constructed in the area that would provide a measurable improvement in response. This station would also provide the North Reading Fire Department with needed resources to enhance service in the community. And our second recommendation, the northwest and southeast quadrants of the community have been identified as the areas where response improvement is desired to maintain service level in the community. And our third recommendation is, the new station should be designed to accommodate the number of personnel to be assigned currently and also consider for future increases in staffing, along with the community's growth. Recommendation four, the new fire station should be designed to address the current space deficits and deployment needs of North Reading Fire Department apparatus. And it may also address current apparatus space conflicts that you see at the Park Street Station. And then recommendation five, the proposed renovation of the Park Street Station should continue. And both the additional station and the Park Street renovation should be considered as a single capital project. The scope and timing of this project may need to be adjusted depending on the size and configuration of a second station. So that is an overview of our report. As I said earlier, there is much more in-depth information and data in the report itself. And I'll be glad to answer any questions if I may ask.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, so this again was a report that was funded out of the fire department's budget from last year. And it was overseen by the fire chief and the director of public works. But the Fire Station Building Committee wasn't informed to form this. They reviewed, I think, the initial scope back in the fall. And then were privy to a presentation on the, the report at last Wednesday's Fire Station Building Committee meeting. So through Mr. Massey, please, Mayzor wants to speak to that.
Sure, just to bring to the, to the board's attention, the Fire Station Building Committee has made a motion, approved the, excuse me, made a motion to recommend the select board to place an article in the June Town Meeting warrant to allocate an amount not to exceed $200,000 for programming and site selection for a West Side Fire Station and a review of the central, central station headquarters. This is a great step moving forward. I think the people spoke in June. Here we are, hitting our goal, coming back a year later with a new plan. The, I want to thank the chief, I want to thank MRI, working in cooperation with DPW. You folks have done a great job. The building committee itself has also done a fantastic job of having a lot of great discussions, a lot of in-depth technical discussions, which are certainly needed. This 200K is basically like a feasibility study. It'll look into the options that we have on the West Side Fire Station. It's gonna, you know, it'll recommend between Winter and North Street, per se, or that area. It, it doesn't include any potential of acquiring land. And that's not a necessity, you know, that needs to be studied within this $200,000. The existing fire station, we actually went through schematic design. So you go feasibility, and then you go into schematic, went through schematic for that building. And what this may do is be able to give the architect some time to do some value engineering, I think. The information that we've heard, whether it's the 2008 report saying we need a West Side Fire Station or it's the 2025 report saying we need a West Side Fire Station. The information is the information. This, that committee has chose to accept that information and move forward. In June, we're going to be asking voters for $200,000 to continue this. There's an opportunity where we could have asked for more money, which is a significant amount more money. Maybe another million dollars on top of the 200K to get us through schematic design. We're only asking you, we're gonna only ask the people for the $200,000 to get us through feasibility in an October, potentially, as for more for schematic to finalize plans to move forward into design development. The board is, excuse me, I keep mentioning the board. The committee is also going to be going through some exercises to put on RFQ and get some architects to come in and interview. We're gonna create a subcommittee or a working group that's gonna be able to interview architects and be able to see who's the right fit for us. So this is a great step forward. I'm very happy, and I think the community's been looking for this for a long time. And it's, it's great to finally see it moving in the right direction. It'll start to pick up speed quickly. So more requests for funding will be coming, whether it be October or in the June 2026, which would be going into design development and construction. I have, I will take any questions. And we also have our, our chair, Aaron, our vice chair as well, like to ask any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one more thing, I think on behalf of the fire chief and the director of public works, which is, we, our intention would be to go forward with the request for qualifications process, to issue that over the course of the middle part of the spring, assuming the board would look favorably on a warrant article going to town meeting with regard to continued planning. And that would allow us to try to maintain our timelines so that we could very quickly, after town meeting, award a contract. That's sort of what our initial thinking is. And it's not something that necessarily needs to be determined this evening. But soon, you know, we would certainly welcome the, the direction. And then I'll just only say, because he did do so much work on this, generally, in the Department of Public Works, Danny Zoffrey, who went through all the data together. Sorry, I didn't get Warren saying his last name, because he did a lot of work for the chief.
Yeah, he did. More members in question, still there?
Not as much questions as comments. I mean, what you presented is, I think what most of us recognize and know anyway, I mean, most of the growth that's taken place, the new growth that's taken place in town has been on the, on that side of town. You know, it's, and we've been talking about the potential for a West Side Station for decades. It's to, it just come down to the question of affordability and location and affordability to do it. But in concert with that, you know, we, again, the board's just been addressing this on the last several years and on the last several contracts, and we need to, we need personnel to respond to. And while we need location to work out, and we need people to respond. And I think we've taken appropriate action through our contract negotiations to grow the force of the, the fire department so that we can respond on a timely basis, have people to backfill in the event of a second event. You know, still have people to respond on a timely basis. And we're still at a critical juncture right now, and as many of you are aware, we're talking about the need for an additional four firefighters to put on, to help meet those needs. So it's all dovetails here. We need to, we can build the building, but we haven't got the people to be housed in it and to respond appropriately. It doesn't work either. So again, the information is very useful. It, it quantifies things, truly quantifies, you know, what's occurred here in North Reading over the last five years. But I don't think it's anything that we didn't know. It's just, but it's been very helpful to put it in there and go to the public to move forward. A lot of members of the public want to know the statistics and the details. And I certainly appreciate all the effort that's put into, put into this. And again, I try to be supportive of moving forward to get this to a point where we can finally quantify how much is, we're gonna be asking the public for, taxpayers for, to bring it to fruition. And it's a public safety need, needs to be addressed. There's a cost associated with doing it on a, being able to respond on a timely basis. And it's a risk-reward situation that the public's going to have to decide as to whether or not they want to support it or can afford to support it. And we need to get the details to put it forward. So I appreciate all the effort that's been put into it, appreciate the report this evening. And we're forward to supporting the article with June Town Meeting. If the rest of my colleagues agree that we should put it on.
So the four minutes and the six minutes, it looks like our current station actually covers everything but the fringes in the four minutes. That's what I saw on the slide here. So other towns, you've done studies. Are all towns pretty much within the four minutes? Are a lot of towns in the four to six minutes? How would you, like rural areas, I don't know how they ever possibly do it. So they must do a whole different standard, but can you provide some color on my question?
Typically, what you saw, you know, with our report is, you know, you have your main station and you, and you have that area that you can respond to. But there are other communities that, you know, have a larger landmass and it takes them longer. The other, the other piece to this, as was alluded by Mr. O'Leary, is the staffing. And there's a common occurrence that, and we're seeing this all over in England, fire departments are having back-to-back calls. And by back-to-back, we mean anywhere within 30 minutes, they get a second, either an ambulance call or a fire call, and that takes up all their resources also. So the, what you're, what you're really trying to do is not as much overlap, but, you know, filling those areas on that west side that you saw.
Yeah. But how do, how do other communities where they go well over four minutes, how do they, how do they handle that? Is there anything we can learn from that?
Just potentially, you know, building more stations to cut down on the response times would, would be able to happen.
If I may just jump in, Mr. O'Leary, if we had, I see where you're going with that. I read, I read the data, sort of similar to what you're getting at, is if we had all the money in the world, is, is our current fire station perfect location? No. So if we had all the money in the land of the world, we'd probably have to move them a little like this in our map.
Yeah, yeah.
We just don't, we have what we have.
Yeah. So I'm choking on, I can only imagine this is gonna be a 40 to 15 million dollar solution, plus the staffing to do this. And that's a lot of money, no matter how we cut it, that's a lot of money. And then if you talk to stations, I think our staffing is, you know, it's not gonna be, if we had just done the one station, there'd be a certain amount of staffing. If you talk two stations, you're gonna need to duplicate some of the people that you have there. So this is even more than a, you can tell me if I'm wrong. But this is more than just building, you know, rehabbing what we have and creating a new one, it's staffing it going forward.
Yes, it is definitely going forward, Mr. O'Leary. And some of that will be using whatever we have, the staffing at that time, splitting the force, whether it's evenly or somewhat unevenly, depending on our numbers.
Yeah, but I mean, you're gonna need some management in each of the buildings. Right now, you can have management in one building, you're gonna need management in both buildings. So we're gonna be getting a little bit more top-up, I can imagine, going forward.
Well, I think we addressed that in the last contract as well, with the tenants coming on board. So we did address that.
Would that accommodate, because I was in that contract, was that anticipation of a second station?
Yes, that was, that was more anticipation of increased staffing so that we can handle multiple calls. But typically, on a second station, there is an officer in charge of, at that station. And that lieutenant or that captain, depending on how I divide those forces up, would be in charge of that station. And obviously, there'd be visits from the chief and the deputy chief and whatnot. But they would have to be oversight of that station.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm just very concerned about the ultimate cost, what it's gonna cost, knowing like Woburn Station, how much that costs and other stations. I mean, it's a very, very expensive thing for us to do. And the community doesn't necessarily have a lot of money to do it. So I'm just concerned about that. But I will support the $200,000 request because we need to learn more information, and that makes sense.
Yeah, I think part of that feasibility and schematic is looking at more in-depth, the committee looking at services and what's our frequency, you know? Let's just say there's a potential new fire station, and EMS station on the west side of town. And let's say it's three days. If we determine that, hey, maybe most of our calls on this west side is EMS, there's a potential that the committee might say, hey, you know, 66% EMS in the station and one fire truck. And over here, you know, there's a way to, but I see what you're saying.
Yeah, no, that, that makes sense, because you could have EMS be more remote, you'd less staff required to do it. And then, as it was saying in the report, you know, there, a truck would come in, you know, a fire truck would come in afterwards, but you need someone there, by the way, being EMS. And actually, on the chart, EMS is substantial, a lot of calls. You know, actual fire, not fire, but I mean, a real fire is very, very small. But we always have the fire trucks come on for a medical situation. So anyways, just concerned about that. And I hope the committee is flexible in thinking about how we can do service levels. Because again, the, the cost is gonna be exorbitant, in my opinion.
And just jumping, you know, I think part of what the committee was looking at, you know, the town as well, was the concern of making the central headquarters the headquarters forever, right? So we are potentially growing on the east side of town, and we are growing on the west side of town. That heat map was incredible to show the frequency of calls in an area. So most of our calls, Main Street, Martin's Landing, boroughs. So this will currently, you know, the Dogwood Lanes and the Tipton Top rate, you might still get the same response time, but the frequency is far less than, 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 I'm not sure.
And that's truly what those series of maps were meant to illustrate, that we considered our remote locations, but where did it make the most sense to concentrate? And if you understood the heat map, you would see the call density and really where a second station should be located, based on availability.
Yeah. One last thing, we've talked about regional. Are any of the neighboring town stations close to our fringe areas where they could potentially help cover areas for us quicker than we could?
Not, not, not on a consistent basis. So their, all their headquarters are more centrally located.
Okay, like us, like us, in the same.
Yeah, and then, you know, when you take into account, let's say, Reading. Reading has a station, a second station on Woburn Street to handle their fringe areas, right? And I understand Wilmington may be in the process of trying to get something a little closer to some of their fringe areas as well. And you look at North Banoma and some of these other communities, Woburn's a great example. They have multiple stations so that they can meet their response times according to FPA standards. And right now, like the map shows, you know, we have a great core that we can beat in four to six minutes. It's, it's, it's expanding a little bit, and we do hit some six to eight minute marks. I think Sean had mentioned they were eight to 10. They're truly the six to eight minute regions, and they are the true outliers out there, you know? So nothing is more important to the community than the location of fire stations for those reasons that Sean identified already.
Just, just to touch upon the existing station as well. When I say value engineering, the plans and the efforts that the HKT, the current architect, did for the existing fire stations, those won't go to waste. I mean, that's, that's the best part here, is they got to a certain point where we say, hey, we're changing directions from a big picture. However, we can still use this to say, yeah, we can cut this out, cut that out, cut this out. My, my goal, I certainly think the existing fire station, as far as, it's gotta be discussed with the committee, is to potentially cut that, you know, by 50%. Because you want to be able to move that money into good. And what's gonna happen is if you do have a new West Side Fire Station, the fire department's gonna need it, need to move into that West Side Fire Station while we renovate the existing. Much less renovation that we were going to do, but it's sort of how it's gonna have to work. And we wouldn't need any temporary quarters, which is, which is great.
Yeah, and that's, that's entirely accurate, and that's something the committee has always seen. We don't want to spend money that's lost, let's say. So if we waited and the community agreed that, yeah, we do need a second station, it makes all the sense in the world to build that station, move in, save the community, while, let's say, not waste the money on a temporary quarters.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, if we had endless money, you know, we wouldn't even be having a conversation. We would, I think, everybody agrees that it would be positive for the town. I appreciate all this information, it's great information. I appreciate the committee doing the work, because ultimately, it goes to the community. It goes to town meeting. doing the work, because ultimately, it goes to the community, it goes to town meeting, and they decide whether they want to spend that money or not, you know, so the more information we can get, the more clear we can make it, the better, so I would support the $200,000, I would support going forward and, and getting as much information as we can to bring to the community.
So when you look at community, what makes it attractive? It's public safety, it's public maintenance through DPW, schools, those are, you know, you go to any real estate website and like, there's a million links for all of those, right? Because that's what every, depending on what stage of life, you're looking for something. I mean, you want all three, because all three work, so this is a given. I also like the approach that, because we don't have unlimited money, and there's one already there, but if you put one on the west side, eventually, eventually those moving in on the east, like myself, we're going to be old, that will happen. So if you think about that now, that maybe in 20 years, you could have a shift in more calls on this point, where, you know, that, then we don't put a future community in board in town, where it's like, great, they solved a great problem and we spent a lot of money, but we got the problem again, because now all of a sudden, you know, where the average age in this part of town was in the 40s, well, now they're in their 70s, right? And, and just again, I think we had a presentation at one point, Chief Stats, I think, when we were looking at more firefighters EMS, where, you know, to show that, as, as parts of the community got older, there were more, I mean, it's just, it's natural, right? I mean, it is what it is. So I, I do like that forward thinking of it, because, yeah, I mean, we got our, our main one, and, yeah, would it be nice to be able to say, you know, Lowell Street, April, and Endibel, yeah, that'd be awesome, but it's just not realistic, but I do think, you know, it's a great plan, I thank everybody, I know a lot of work has gone into it, and I, and it's just, I know people twist themselves into pretzels at times to get all, like, the information, because there's so many directions you can go, so, but yeah, no, I'm definitely in support, and it's something where, it's public safety, we have to make it work, you know, there, there's, you know, I like to tell people, there, there's discretionary things of whether you can go on vacation, and there's non-discretionary things, like you need the heat to work, this is one of those, I mean, it's got to work, I don't, I mean, we got to figure it out together and bring it to town meeting, but we got, we got to come up with a way to make it work, and, you know, I'm sure that for something like this, again, I always say that, when I've seen people support or not support something at town meeting, I think a lot of it is, you know, you have to show value, this is not one that's really difficult to show value on, I mean, it, it kind of, it is what it is, like, we know the value, because, you know, at the end of the day, like, we want to, and it can be anybody, you want to be able to call and have someone there, you know, respond, and I agree, that's, first slide you showed about how important it is, depending on the medical episode of how, how quick somebody needs to get there, you know, that, that, that's the big things I think of, like, you know, stroke, heart attack, things like that, that it's like, time is really of the essence, so, you know, to get it down within, do the best you can, so, you know, I appreciate it, so, Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah, just, you know, as the committee moves forward, and again, whatever the feasibility study shows, it's going to show, but from a cost standpoint, if we're going to, we should be looking at the ability to phase in, and then, we don't need a new, necessarily, right now, a whole brand-new police headquarters, big fire headquarters, I don't know how affordable that is. What we do need, and the vast majority of our calls are medical EMS, so we need to be able to respond quickly with our ambulance service, which is a much smaller structure. Now, if we get a site that we can expand upon later on, at a future date for more fire apparatus, or moving the, the headquarters to another location, well, it'd be nice to be able to do that all at once, it may not be economically feasible, and so what, what I just want to suggest is that as we're looking at the plans moving forward, be sure to include some sort of an ability to phase in, you know, the, the space to at least have the EMS over on the west side of town, being able to respond for medical calls, because that's the vast majority of the calls that our fire department has, and the response time we can cut down considerably. And I know that other communities, what they do is, and the chief has already given these statistics over the years, is to, you know, the timing of the calls too, when is, when is the department most busy, you know, when do we get most of the, the medical calls, when do we get most of the, the ability to traverse the community, you know, at 2:00 a.m., it's a much easier for the fire department that is at 2:00 p.m. And sometimes, some of the area communities, you know, shut down a, a west side station, so to speak, during certain times, and again, it's the risk-reward, for those few times that we get the calls at the wrong time for those people, the affordability is what I'm most concerned about, is that, you know, I want to be able to get the public safety personnel there on a very timely basis, to minimize the impact on the individuals who need the services, while at the same time, we have to be able to afford it, so we should be looking at a site that we can, you know, meet some of the immediate need, if we can't afford all of it at once, and I just want to put that up there. Thank you.
Okay, so, is there anything else from the board? No, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Alberto, we can move on to the public hearing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there a notice?
There's a notice in the packet, I'm just thinking.
Oh, that's fine, I can read it, unless you have it in front of you. Tell me what page, I'm scrolling now.
This is the telecommunications.
Yes, yeah. All right, I have it here, I'm switching around a bit.
O'Leary?
Did you have it?
No, no.
I'll, I'll read it, folks are okay with that. So it's a public hearing courtesy notice, in accordance with chapter 138 of Massachusetts' general laws, an in-person and virtual public hearing to be held this evening, March 17th in Room 14, Town Hall, 235 North Street, and via virtual technology at 7:45 p.m., regarding the town's intention to lease town-owned property at 166 Chestnut Street for personal wireless service antennas and related equipment, and the Zoom access information was provided in the notice. Mr. Chairman, through you, we were before this board, maybe six weeks or so ago, with a draft of requests or proposals that was largely, say largely similar to what you saw when it was put out for proposals, and we, we were fortunate that we did receive a proposal, we received one proposal, you saw, it happened to be the current owner and operator of the cell tower at the, at the DPW facility, which I think, you know, could be advantageous both for them and for the community in terms of minimal disruption, but I'll let the Department of Public Works Director, Mr. Parisi, as a very brief presentation, we'll go through this evening, just to describe what we received for the proposal.
All right, thank you, so, just trying to get to the file here, there you go.
Before we go to the slideshow, can you just share?
Sure. Share, can we do that? Can we take a little control, please?
All right, I guess I can help you there.
Many are out there.
Thank you.
And that's the tech guy.
Let's pass this one. Let's see, where is there?
Yeah, look on the share.
Zoom, no here, yes here, let's go, get you back to there. Thank you, I can't read, need to have a new glasses.
All right.
Oh, okay, I'll just click on, change, oh, yeah, it'd be good to go.
Thank you. All right, so I will begin this slideshow. All right, yeah, so, so basically, we're coming back to sort of review with you the proposal that we have from our sole proposer, which is Crown Castle. You'll see here, little lease history, Crown Castle has the current lease, it was a 25-year lease period with five-year terms, so there was the initial five-year term, and four additional terms for a period of 25 years, with each five-year term increasing by 25%. So you can see, you know, how $37,000 from the initial five-year period has grown to $90,000. So it's come upon, you know, a date shortly that this agreement or lease period will be ended, May 4th, 2000 is where it began, May 3rd, 2025 is where this current lease agreement will end. So we did go out with an RFP and have solicited bids, and it makes sense that the, the current leaseholder would, would put in a proposal and most likely be the only one, because they own the tower, the tower would have to come down and the new tower would have to be constructed, unless there's some agreement to sell it to some other company other than Crown Castle, but, so what we have here is, you know, the current lease that will continue, you know, should continue on if you agree to the terms of the contract. But here's a little information again on the, on the current lease payments, there is, in addition to the lease payments themselves from Crown Castle, we have some sub-tenants, so T-Mobile, AT&amp;T are on the, the tower as well, Dish Network is, is coming on board as well, so we'll have some revenue from that company as well. But just for T-Mobile and AT&amp;T revenues for the year, they're, they're both totaling I have no reason to believe they, they wouldn't continue on the tower for the next 20-year period, and Dish Network will join them as well, whether there's another, you know, tenant that comes along in this, this agreement that we're entering into, you have to see, but it will be at the same 51% share of whatever Crown Castle negotiates with any other telecommunications company. So, yeah, so this, this town meeting, this past town meeting in June 2024, it was approved on the 29th for a term, not to exceed 20 years, so that's basically what we're looking for, it's on a 25-year term, but a 20-year term. The RFP was put out in January 15, 2025, a deal for the 20-year period, again, only one proposal was received, Crown Castle, their proposal was deemed to be meeting the minimum terms of the lease agreement, opposed to be executed. So the terms of the agreement, again, initial five-year lease term with extensions of three periods of five years each, for a maximum term of 20 years, first five-year contract lease term will begin at $115,000, so that's basically taking that $90,000, knowing that this current lease agreement is expiring on and bumping that 25%, round a little bit higher for our benefit, to $115,000. So that'd be paid in advance in equal monthly installments, so you could have each month, and you will pick a 1/12 of $115,000, that'll be for five years, but after five years, it'll jump again for a 25% increase, again, we will have that same 51% of the gross revenues that the sub-tenants have agreed to, to pay Crown Castle, you know, we got 51% Crown Castle, and 49% of those agreements, and those payments will be in the readers, and paid directly by the sub-tenant to the town. So here's a revenue stream of, you know, what 20-year period would look like, we do have, we do have, you know, $115,000 starting year one to year five, you can see 25% of the escalator here, will jump it to $143,750, again, after five years, it jumps to $179,687, and five years, for the last five years of the agreement, $224,609. So provided that, you know, telecommunications, cell companies continue to need towers like the one we have, and they continue to, I guess, sign up for another five years as we go, you know, towards our 20, that will be the payment that the tower will receive annually for the last five years, $224,000. So in total, over 20 years, $3,315,000 will be collected from this agreement. So steps to a lease agreement, so conduct the public hearing for the select board consideration and approval of the lease terms, and that's what we're doing here tonight, send notification to Crown Castle, a decision by the select board to enter into a lease agreement with them, draft a contract agreement similar to what was included as a sample agreement in the RFP, and submit that to KPOF review, and approval as to the form of the, of the agreement, and then we'll send the lease agreement to Crown Castle for their execution, and on their return to us, we'll have it at the select board meeting, hopefully at the March 31st, select board meeting, for your signature. That is the summary.
That's the presentation of the public hearing, so once the board members have the opportunity to ask questions, open up a public.
Actually, you know what, I'll go to the public first, any questions?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I think the structure of the public hearing dates to when the structure was first constructed, so we just followed something very similar. Obviously, this is the same structure that's been in place for 25 years now at this point in time, and worked well in terms of a revenue stream and providing some coverage for the community.
Mr. Hober?
Through the chair to Mr. Parisi, Joe, could you give us a rough estimate in year one of this first, of this upcoming five-year segment, what the town can expect to receive between the lease agreement and the 51% of the head and outs of AT&amp;T and T-Mobile?
I, I believe what you're saying is, you know, for this next five-year period, what would be the first year?
Right.
Total of the, the lease?
And the...
And the 51% share.
Right.
So, so I think we're basically going to be at about, you know, $91,000, probably more so with the Dish Network, but, you know, if you want to sort of look at that as being, you know, $90,000, that's fine, plus $115,000.
Okay, so it's a couple hundred thousand in year one of this new five-year lease agreement?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone on mic?
I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay, I will close the public portion of the public hearing, board members.
Thank you, Mr. Parisi, I think you did a great job, I think it's a good deal, but personally, what I see on my end sometimes in my line of work is typically exactly how you're projecting is a 5% inflation per year, so, all looks good to me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to award a lease for personal wireless services antennas and related equipment at 166 Chestnut Street to Crown Atlantic Company LLC, and to authorize the town administrator and director of public works to finalize terms of the lease for the board's consideration.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, for a discussion, hearing not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Parisi.
Thank you.
He's not back, only 14 minutes behind.
That's not bad.
Cat heart of a few, it was 168 pages.
I know, but it just goes on and on.
We can move on.
All right, okay, so I think we're up to, to our budget hearings.
Yep.
Joining with the finance committee, I think you see, the finance committee, and you all.
There's a few people right in back, and there's a...
Had a ride above.
Oh, okay, that's right, there's somebody on mic. So just a reminder for everybody, as a statement I indicated, it's the last thing, I'm not going to go through the 12-side presentation, but I will just remind folks that what you're going to hear this evening are requests from departments, boards, and commissions for their budgets, they do not reflect... They do not reflect necessarily budgets that are balanced at this point in time. That's sort of the difficult part of these hearings. Making it a little more difficult for the group as before you this evening is they have already been asked to look at their budgets and to identify further reductions to those budgets for the upcoming fiscal year. That will not be the topic for discussion this evening. I don't think it's necessarily fair to them at this moment in time, but that will need to be a discussion at a future meeting as we talk about balance in the budget. So you're going to hear from them in the version of the budget that was submitted to you back in mid-February, with their requests, a little bit about what's going on in their departments for each one. And I believe we start with the Hillview Commission. I started standing right in front of them, so thanks for joining us, Ted. Mrs. Mulberg here as well, so thank you both for joining us.
Do you need a PowerPoint for tonight?
I sent one to Jennifer, but it's innocuous, so if we don't, in the interest of time, you can move on without it.
All right. Good evening.
All right, so we're talking about the 2026 Hillview budget here. I guess I'll start right off. The total is down for the spend, and that is largely because we're going to be spending $42,000 less on miscellaneous capital. And starting last year, we moved that bucket of capital into being funded within our own operating budget, so that won't be bonded or any kind of capital in that way. It's rolling right in. And so last year was $342,000 and this year it is $300,000 for small miscellaneous capital. So that's why overall we're down. There are a few things that have gone up, mostly for the course management, and that is contractual. That goes up 3% each year. This year, we are increasing golf rates minimally, but mostly enough to keep up with that type of rate. So that is what will be driving our expected revenues up. The course is pretty well, you know, at capacity already, so it's rates that are going to be driving revenues up, you know, ongoing. So those are the key things. A small other issue, a couple thousand dollars on insurance, that's just what we're saying for the insurance, we got to do that. Those are the key movers. Nothing else going on. Like I said, we are doing $300,000 in small capital. In 2026, we are not doing any withdraw downs from retained earnings. We may be doing or probably doing in 2027, phase three of course improvement plan that we've been doing. We just finished, we're completing phase two right now, but there won't be anything drawn from retained earnings in the 2026 budget. So we'll be having healthy retained earnings.
Okay. Any questions?
Just to understand the golf rate. We went from about 26 to about 28?
I think we were $1 in $2 increases depending on nine to 18, and I think we went $1 across the board on carts.
I think it's great.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're still at great value. We tend to keep it that way. We only even talk about increases every other year.
I always thought, yeah, if you raise a buck or two, you're going to still see the same clientele, so that's...
That's what we're hoping, you know? We have some older fellows on the commission here, so they rebut back to us and say what they'll accept. So that's good to bounce off.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No, the commission, Karen, who carries the workload here during the course of the weekend, is just doing a fantastic job and being great stewards for the enterprise. Weather does impact things substantially.
People were out there this weekend, though. We opened and people walked in the course, so that was a good sign.
Yeah, so anyway, yeah, but they've done a great job for those of you who have the ability to go out there and check up, of course, the improvements have been significant. Feedback has been extremely favorable. And again, the response, the rounds are holding steady, which is great.
Yeah.
And they're just doing a fantastic job, the community. I just want to acknowledge that publicly and thank the commission and Ted for your stewardship and Karen for your daily workload. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
All right, I believe the board of health is next, and I see the health director there. Mr. Bracy, how are you?
Please, Mr. Bracy, I'll hold you.
Would you like me to display a reservation idea of...
Do you have it?
I have.
Can I move it on this?
You can. Or I can move it for you.
Okay.
Is it the March 10th version that you emailed me? Is it unchanged?
I think so. Good evening.
Good evening.
I guess...
If you maggot, look at that right inside that big square, to just expand it up totally. There you go. And then just hit the arrow to move it?
I think I have to move it for you.
Okay.
But I'll go the first.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just say next slide when you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the select board, finance committee, finance director, Mr. Gilberto, thank you for this opportunity to be present to give an outline of the FY26 Board of Health budget. In the outline, what we're going to cover is the FY25, FY26 budget. The Board of Health is looking to request level service funding. We'll talk about the Board of Health mission, the Board of Health program and services that we provide to the community, FY24 notable achievements, and performance workload indicators. The Board of Health mission statement is to promote, protect, and public health, including the physical, mental, social wellness of all the residents of the town of North Reading. The services that the North Reading Health Department provides is policy administration, the environmental health, food protection program, community sanitation, community health, emergency planning, animal control, and other functions. On the next page, I won't go into every single one of them, but there's a breakdown of each division and what those divisions entail as far as what the health department services provides. So I'm sure everyone has seen that. Next page, please. FY24 notable achievements. In community health, one of the things we were able to do this year was implement free community public health services for our North Reading residents, seniors. We were able to bring in, working in conjunction with the council on aging, with my public health nurse, Mrs. Merrill, and my administrative assistant, Mrs. Doolan, we were able to bring immigrant services, the Lion's Eye in Air Vision, diabetes in older adults, 2020 Eye Mobile, American Red Cross, Blood Drive, influenza and shingle vaccine clinics. These, all these services that we provided this year were free of cost to our residents. So our residents didn't have to pay anything for these free services that we provided. And that was expanding our community health program through our public health nurse, Mrs. Merrill. Other things that we did for the food protection program, we implemented new regulations on sustainable footwear and packaging. We have eliminated styrofoam from restaurants and we're working with businesses in these restaurants and supermarkets to eliminate those off the shelf per the town bylaw, we believe, or Board of Health regulation. We've implemented new regulations to ban illicit food products with illicit ingredients that did not comply with federal food and drug administrations, general recognized as safe, grass. So what we basically did is we've eliminated businesses in the community from selling, you know, hemp products, CBD products that are infused in food products because they're violation of the federal food code. So we've banned that throughout the community, so we don't allow any businesses to serve any types of illicit food products that have those types of ingredients in them. We've applied and approved for a state action for public health excellence grant. This grant provides shared services for public health nurse and an inspector. Again, we've applied for this grant, we're able to receive these services at no cost to the town or any cost to the Board of Health budget. This year, we've collaborated with Doolan Interstate Water Pollution Control Commission to do the oversight and administration of the North Reading installer's license. Again, something that we were first and on the forefront, the first health department in the Commonwealth to do this with a credential agency. We participated in the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Community Air Quality Sensors Grants. So currently, right now, we have about three or four air quality monitors throughout the community. With this grant, I believe we will have somewhere up to, I think, 24, and we'll be able to monitor the air quality throughout the community on a better level than what we have been able to do. Board of Health staff participated and completed in cross-training, emergency preparedness, Region 3D training, food manager protection certification, American Red Cross Heart Save. So we've been working on our staff to get them cross-trained in all aspects of public health. So we've done that this year, we'll continue to do that over the next year. Last year, the Board of Health issued 282 permits. You can see through this pie chart, the breakdown is that. Last year, the Board of Health conducted over 690 inspections and complaints. Again, that's broken down into this pie chart of the types of inspections and complaints that we handled. Plan review. The Board of Health worked on 971 plan reviews, working with the building department and environmental health program. Again, in this pie chart, there's a breakdown of those. The health department work, performance workload indicators. The workplace indicators is basically one full-time health director, a full-time administrative assistant. We have one contractual onsite sewage disposal system plan reviewer. We have one contract onsite sewage disposal system evaluator, and we have one part-time nurse who works 24 hours. The Board of Health goals for FY25 is to continue to implement the 10 essential functions of public health in the town of North Reading to be able to sustain public health services, to continue to expand the role of public health nursing services throughout the community through the community impact team, social service action team, council on aging, and the Region 3 Emergency Preparedness Public Health Coalition. Also, continue to provide public health outreach by informing and educating and empowering the residents and the businesses of the community of North Reading. Any questions? Questions? Mr. Waller?
Just curious, the complaints, you had like 690 complaints, what are the...
It was a combination of complaints and inspections. The majority of those were pretty much inspections, Title V, food protection. I would say we probably had maybe 10 or 12 complaints throughout the year.
Okay, yeah.
I just combined them into that bunch.
Okay, thanks. Sounded very high to me. Anyone else? Mr. O'Leary?
You operate with a full-time equivalent, two and a half people?
Yes.
Two and a half people, along with some contractual services to assist, you know, these special services in other areas. Just some of the other things that you were kind of going here, partnering with DEP in relation to air quality, particularly over here by Benaventno?
Yes.
So you put these monitoring things out there, and I assume one of them's over there?
Yes, yeah. There's actually one on the backside of Benaventno, and they were actually installing one in Martin's Landing.
Okay.
And we have been working with the regional director of mass DEP on complaints that we have received.
Right.
So we're continuing to work with them on this matter.
And then as far as the Middlesex has a public health collaborative?
Yes.
Just expand on that, that helps and assists us?
So that's helped us tremendously. That's a shared services grant. We get an inspector who comes in one day a week, who helps to conduct Title V inspections and food inspections for us. So that's been very helpful for us, given the limited resources and staff that we do have.
So again, I think it's important for the public to understand that we're operating with two and a half full-time equivalent individuals to meet the public health needs here and doing a fantastic job of addressing the situation, and certainly from health inspections of the restaurants and determining that the space is full to the bio-pacific systems. We've got the new ADU law coming into place. We're going to have to collaborate with the building commissioner over here and...
Yeah, so let me just speak briefly on that. So we did go to a seminar last two weeks ago with mass DEP on the Board of Health side of regulations for ADUs. They don't have anything as of yet. I've been working in collaboration with the building commissioner on a daily basis, kind of just crossing our notes and kind of pinpointing what scenarios may or may not be like and how that's going to affect both our departments. So I see us working very closely with this, but I also see that it's going to be very convoluted and very...
Fluid.
Yeah, to say the least.
Say the least.
But we'll get through it.
So again, the Board of Health, volunteer Board of Health, have spent a lot of time communicating with the block, all the competitors, doing a great job in outreach, working with the senior center, and again, we appreciate all your efforts and all your outreach in particular, because that's really expanded significantly and you've touched more members of the community, which is great.
Yeah, and I would like to say, I'd be remiss if I didn't say this, that the staffing that I have now with Mrs. Merrill and Mrs. Doolan, they've been great. It's been a learning curve, but, you know, in my absence, they fill that void, and they did a tremendous job. So they should be recognized probably for the job that they do, which we just did.
Mr. Massey?
Sorry, just another question. Does, Mr. Jethri, the air monitors that you put out, when the alarms go off for that, what is, what are we doing?
So actually, the alarms will be triggered by the agency that is running the grant. We're just working with them to find locations where we feel would best suit to put them. So they will be able to go onto an app and we'll be able to track that when they get that up and running. So we're, again, we're still working with them on the locations and getting that up and running. It's only been a couple of weeks.
I'm just interested, though, like even in the current ones, what's the role of the DEP for North Reading? If the alarms go off and say, hey, the air quality's bad, what are we doing?
We just basically generate a report and try to figure out where that's coming from. I mean, I would say the majority of the complaints that we do get is from Benaventno. Unfortunately, Benaventno's in 95% in Wilmington, 5% in North Reading. There is a mass DEP consent order, which prohibits much of what enforcement we can and cannot do. When we do get those complaints, we defer them to mass DEP. I mean, I will say it's very, it's very tough working with them to, you know, I understand the concerns of our residents and I feel for them, and, you know, there's more I want to do from a public health standpoint of view on a local level, but because there's a consent order, there's not much I can do other than keep calling mass DEP, which gets very frustrating at times. But I can certainly talk with you about that offline.
Sure.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
We have a question from behind you.
No, please.
Thanks, Mr. Bracy, for the presentation. I think you have it all laid out here in the budget, but maybe can you just talk broadly about the increase for mosquito control and any conservancy based on what we saw in the past summer?
So generally, every year, there's usually a 2% or 3% increase in services. It's really more of an administrative cost for them. I think the services that were provided to us last year were excellent. You know, they do a lot of ground spraying, aerial spraying, we do beat off the catch patients. I think with those types of services that they do provide us, kept everything in check last year. They do collect once a week, they monitor, collect, test, they get us those results. So I think working with Eastern Middlesex Control has been excellent for us. I think it really was tremendous last year for us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe not.
You guys purposely waiting for me to turn my head?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a challenge. It's for you two, the Board of Health Director.
Mr. Bracy.
Mr. Bracy, back up. They're waiting. Every time I turn my head, they raise their hand.
Maybe not.
You guys purposely waiting for me to turn my head?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a challenge. It's for you to, the Board of Health Director.
Mr. Bracy?
Mr. Bracy, back up. They're waiting. Every time I turn my head, they raise their hand. I mean, it's like my kids ask for a snack at different times from in the table.
Mr. Bracy, sir. Do the monitors in North Reading have anything to do with Aernow, Aernow.gov? Are you familiar with that website?
No.
Aernow.gov is a website that gives you, tells you about the ozone, or smoke, or whatever else. You put in your zip code, and it tells you roughly what's going on in your part of town, or in your neighborhood. It's not, my guess is that the monitors are located somewhere like PBD or something, so it's not necessarily street-specific. But it's a very good website, and it's one that anybody that lives in an area where there are fires has all the time. So I didn't know if this had any connection to that or not.
I think it actually might be. I think if the original three that we have, I know that we had gotten a concern through the Town Administrator's Office about a year and a half ago, and we researched that. And that may be the actual website that we actually went to. And it kind of indicated where those three monitors were. And it was a lot of PN25 fugitive dust that was coming from that amount that was catching that one air quality, air monitor. And that was why we had such a high reading. But when we cross-referenced it to the other two air monitors, they were extremely low. So you kind of just connect the dots with that. And so that's kind of what we figured out, and that's kind of why we wanted to add another one over by Martin's Landing, because we're getting a lot of calls and concerns about the fugitive dust coming across the street. And that's our goal, is actually to try to work with Mass DEP to try to implement something where we can protect that dust from going into the North Reading.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from Finance? Run.
Hey, Jerry Noel, the Building Commissioner. Of course, I'd like to thank the woman sitting behind me, Finance Director. The present thing you've done relative to my budget, appreciated. Finance Committee, Select Board Members, Town Administrator, and of course, the new Select Board Secretary. First, I'd like to, I just want to expound upon the...
That's Jerry Noel.
That's my presentation, thank you. Okay, this is an authorizing zoning Select Board presentation. Presentation overview, zoning board appeals mission and notable achievements. Mission of the zoning board of appeals considers appeals of the building officials, special permits, variances that may impact the residents of town. Their efforts and decisions aid in the well-being of the neighborhoods and businesses and business district. This will also try to promote safety, safety and welfare of the people of town. Protect the public health for those who not just live here, but pass through as well. Notable achievements in 2024, the board had 27 applications, three home occupations, two special permits, seven special use permits, four appeals of the building official, and 11 variances. After a full year, we were able to resolve a negative revenue by increasing fees and leaving responsibility of required advertising on the applicants. And these revisions weren't done, last time they were visited was 2005. And we continue to sustain online applications. We have maintained the $2,000 for the potential 40B. And we decreased the postage by $1,000, and we did keep $500 in there once again for the potential 40B. Any questions with that? That's the summary.
Questions? Finance?
Matt, I don't think I need it anymore.
Cool, be so good.
Oh, you have more?
I wish I didn't. ZBA, that was it. Okay, North Reading Building Department. Presentation overview, Building Department's mission, notable achievements in growth, performance workload indicators, FY '26 budget statement, FY goals and objectives. Building Department's mission, Building Department's mission is to protect the lives and safety of residents, visitors, and businesses with implementation of proper construction methods relative to Massachusetts Building Codes regarding all disciplines for all 63, 6,357 structures in town. And we also promote the public health through building codes, zoning bylaws. The department also oversees FY '21 CMR, which is ADA rules and regulations. Notable achievements in growth. We issued 2,341 permits for this last calendar year for all disciplines. The Building Department collected $1,396,000 in fees. The department continues to sustain compliance relative to zoning. Thirteen occupancy permits were issued for new homes. 124 certificates of occupancy were issued to Pulte. It's an indicator of the growth we have in town, and it's also an indicator that's still the desirable place to live. The department continues to perform beyond my expectations with online permitting. Systems have provided transparency with the Building Department, as well as streamlining the permitting and process. When I say continues beyond my expectations, I'd be remiss if I didn't give just a well-known thank you to Kathy for my department secretary. Residents have the ability to search our online system and review permit status, ZBA history, active and closed permits. Performance workload indicators, the Building Department consists of one building inspector, two plumbing and gas inspectors, two electrical inspectors, one sealer, weights and measures, and myself, Building Commissioner. Town assemblies consist of 6,357 buildings, which is 407 commercial buildings, 96 town roof structures, 79 office buildings, and 5,775 residential buildings. Training and education, Mr. Budget Statement. We decreased training education by $700 due to supplementary online training. Off the supplies, we decreased that by 500, iPads and computers being utilized. Of the charges and expenses, we increased that to 700, reason being is because the code changes coming July 1st of 2025. Training and education, gas and plumbing decreased by 300, supplementary online training. Printing electric, never used it. We totally took that up. Weights and measures, we want to increase that $1,000. Leonard Skinnerd? Leonard Skinnerd. Leonard Rose. I know, a full power of names.
I prefer Leonard Skinnerd.
And we start over again. Weights and measures. We increased by $1,000. Leonard has not received an increase, Leonard Rose, since 2013. Weights and measure supplies, we decreased that by $985. He only used a partial budget. Travel, weights and measures travel, decreased 200. And of course, personnel, that's just contractual. FY budget statement. Budget reflects the requirements to meet the growing needs of the community relative to Massachusetts State Building Codes along with Mass general laws, requiring 110 inspections and Chapter 48 zoning compliance. We will continue to protect the lives and the safety of all in town through implementation of proper construction methods in accordance with Massachusetts State Building Codes. We will continue to protect the consumer through weights and measures projections and inspections. Permit fees and inspection revenue. The total we collected from weights and measures in building was $1,405,954. As we know, Pulte is leaving, so we, that's going to decrease, but I don't, I really feel that we have a strong revenue flow that's going to be coming in, just the same. And we did increase the permit fees this past November, so. Permits. The, my color's a terrible, so I've got a cheat sheet here. The 8% is HVAC. Forty, the 40%, which is green, is building. The blue, which is 25%, that's electrical, so you can see the pie chart. The 15% is gray, and the yellow is gas. As you can see, the collective, 927, 189, 578, and it just goes right down line for 2,344 total permits. You can see the permits issued. There's really, really wasn't much of a change from last year, from, I should say, 2023 or 2024. It was a fairly steady flow. Inspections. We had more on the building side because I was able to get a new building inspector, so that increased it to 2,068 versus 1,939, where I did six months of that by myself, so that was... The electrical, we pretty much stayed the same. Plumbing, identical. Gas, pretty much the same, and HVAC, and those are inspections from 2023 to 2024. Goals and objectives. Continue with scanning of plans and documentation for uploading to the permitting system. Continue to be cost-effective and magnum, mag, mag.
Maximize.
Maximize staff efficiency. Sustain awareness for all applicants regarding the 10th addition and the many code changes for July 1st, 2025. Provide updates on the energy code, and at the same time, the time period, this will be epic in the coming years. Continue our enforcement of zoning bylaws with emphasis on training with the Assistant Building Inspector. Assistant New Building Inspector to help achieve his licensing and certification goals. What happened?
Ian?
Does it Ian?
You're finished?
Oh! I finished. I was going to go some more. Any questions?
Question, okay, anyone?
How does the ADU think it went? What's?
The ADU, we just, we just spoke with Perrmanize, our permitting. And they're basically assisting us in basically putting an application together. And they wanted the charges to be, so I talked to them, and I said, it's not going to be a fee, it's going to be a maintenance. You already have the permitting system, we are paying you a fee on a monthly basis. Also yearly, isn't it? Yearly and monthly? Right? And so I negotiated that, so it's going to be no fee. So they're going to just do a plain application, and I already, that's in the process, as a matter of fact, as we speak.
Good job.
So thank you.
As far as inquiries regarding ADUs?
We have seven. We had 42 at the beginning, before it started, 42, now we have seven. So, but it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be difficult, especially to get through permitting relative to seven.
Excepted, right.
Because the state hasn't given Director Bracy any, any direction on that.
Again, thank you for your reference in relation to that whole thing, because that came upon us rather quickly.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a bit.
Your ability to adapt is recognized and appreciated. Yeah, just keep us informed. I'm curious as to what the interest really is. Well, thank you, everything you knew.
You're welcome.
Tremendous job, Jerry, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, Finance, question.
Mr. Chair III, thanks again for the presentation. Most folks probably know what's going on, but can you just talk about what Pulte is going away and the impact that that will have to revenues next year?
The revenue, I think you're going to see, instead of looking at $1,300,000, I think you're probably going to still see a million dollars in the town. We've increased our fees. The town is still, because, because the schools, everybody, not everybody, but a lot of people that moved to the town, that's all, that's all I talk about, the schools, the schools, the schools. So they're very happy to be here. So I think that's going to generate revenue. We also have Cranberry Meadows that's being built right now. We have the 40B, which is still, still potential over at Teresa's. We have 1818 in the Condes, which is that over 55 community over by the police station. We also have the Amber Road, which is 30 units that's going to be coming up, we're hoping for next year. So, and then you also have Andy Road, we're just waiting for the utilities to basically give that the okay. And that's, I don't know, that's four or five houses. So there could be quite a, quite a flow of revenue into the town just through that permitting process.
Where's Cranberry crossing?
Cranberry Meadows is right off of Clinton. Is Clinton?
Yes, 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 okay. That's already underway.
Yeah, so that's, but those are four major, major projects coming in, so. So does that help answer that? Homes and... Any other questions, any other?
Go fast, or so would happen to both.
Information Technology is next, Mr. Cooper?
You can slip this one out, Mr. Goodger, if you can.
Oh, we still share?
Oh, we're still sharing.
I don't know, maybe we need to help.
Oh, this computer's not driving.
Well, in the computer.
I'll plug my own in, there we go. Cool.
I'm totally disconnected.
Yay, now we're good. Oh, you're being seen, please.
I was trying.
She, yeah, there we go. Let's see. Let's see where, where to run, but this one should be. Can we see it here? Plus you get it coming up? Let's find out.
No, we said we're on PowerPoint presentations, and they all say presentations.
Don't help. Yeah, we got a 26-fold, open that, run. Here, cooking, folks? That's okay, slides are more...
Is his with yours?
Yeah, it's all one.
Yeah, all finances under one big thing, great, go team finance. But the slides are more of a supplemental edge, they don't derail us from doing anything important. Come on, old computer. Always when I'm on, it decides to slow down, thanks. But, hi folks. While that's coming up. While that's coming up, um, I'll give you the broad strokes. Um, we have, we've been trying very, very hard to try to keep, uh, lights running in the right sequence and keep the cost down, and hopefully have no one see us any more than absolutely necessary. This year, this kind of, we have one big thing popping up, like, oh, good, it's not up, we can now show it. Now that they're there, let me get back to sharing, and let's get this online for everybody. You didn't have the folks at home can play along. That look good, everyone?
Yep.
Awesome. Just a little bit bigger so everyone can see what's going on, that help? So, I'd like to say we can cut a lot, but I'm not sure if that's really the best option for the town. Um, simply put, I'm actually asking for a little bit more. Um, and the reason for that is, asking for a little bit more from you guys here is gonna cost the town less overall. The backstory to that is, in order for the town to run its mission-critical stuff, uh, Munis, Munis, our, uh, ERP system, our, the town pays and, pays and gets paid based on that, uh, our recently deployed document management system, uh, up until very recently, our mail server all ran on resources host here, on the other end of the building in Town Hall. Um, and that was never a cheap thing, that usually required a capital, uh, request every five years or so to say, "Hey, I need a few hundred thousand dollars to run this big thing that runs all of our mission-critical stuff." That got pricey. As time has progressed and our needs have progressed and the IT landscape has progressed, it's becoming more and more attractive for us to shift from a hosted on-premises solution to a cloud-hosted solution. The payoff to that is, instead of asking you guys every five years for a bunch of money, I'm asking you for a little bit more money every year. Um, and believe it or not, that comes out, uh, what did we say the, the difference was? Forty-odd thousand, yeah, about forty-odd thousand dollars, we'd be asking for forty-odd thousand.
Right, in the operating budget annually, we would need forty-one thousand dollars in twenty-six, but it would save an annual cost of the thirty-nine thousand, so over the five years of, you know, that we would normally buy capital, it's a, it's a true savings to actually have the smaller amount in the operating budget every year. Um, it's unfortunate, that has to be in the operating as opposed to doing it, say, in a capital program from free cash, but in the long run, there are advantages to having it, we'll do that on the next slide, and having it cloud-hosted, plus it does save us money in the long term, uh, putting it in the operating and having it cloud-hosted.
So, uh, when we host something locally, here in-house, we have to purchase the physical infrastructure for it, we have to purchase the licensing, uh, outside of the whatever software we're using, be it Munis or LaserFisher, whatever, we have to buy the licensing to run the system that runs the software. So, we have to pay for server licensing and operating system licensing and database licensing, and that stuff really adds up. Um, it sometimes flies under the radar, but it, it is a significant cost. By paying, having done the cloud, we're paying a little bit more, we're paying a little bit more upfront on paper, but we're getting the advantage of things like the, all the necessary, we'll call it supporting licensing, outside of the actual service, is covered. Uh, the infrastructure, including all of the redundant infrastructure, is covered. Um, if we were to host this on-site, we would have to come up with our own redundancy. Now, normally that would be me trying to, uh, strip down and tune up whatever we were moving off of so that it's a, a running spare, but that's not free. Those things, in order to have new stuff run on that old, uh, hardware, we need new Windows licensing, new SQL licensing, you know, so, these cut, uh, do a hardware to replace older components that are burning out. Those are all things that we have to incur on top of the, the, on its face, oh, hey, I need money for a new system, because the system we have now is several years old, and the ability to get quick fix for it is dropping as we speak. Having it in the cloud gives us all of the site redundancy we need because these services tend to run in their own data centers, centers, sorry, not sensors. Uh, these data centers have their own levels of redundancy, so that if one goes down, or something catastrophic happens, there's another one standing by to run, and we, as the customer or the client, are completely oblivious to it. They do all, as far as the duck on water goes, we're the smooth part, and they're the feet scrambling under the surface. We, so we repurpose the benefits of that. Um, from a security standpoint, once things get into the cloud, certain levels of enforcement, uh, become required, and we're already starting to do that here. And that is, folks will have to multi-factor authenticate to get into their stuff, it won't just be available to the world at large. Someone coming in couldn't just sit down and pop on a server if they were on the network, because that's not how they work in the cloud, they're real particular about that. We tried to, we've been trying to cut stuff to, you know, ameliorate this sort of unpleasant ask. We're trying to drop the professional services down a little bit, uh, and reboot, and move that over to the line item we need it for, so that we don't have to, so that we don't have to ask as much. Um, that still means we're looking at that, somewhere in the neighborhood of, of.
Forty-four thousand.
Forty-four thousand, that number might be, I think we, Lorian and I, uh, sorted that out this afternoon, and that might have been, uh, this version of the file.
Might not have.
The net, the net, twenty-fifty-five, eleven, eleven went down, and fifty-five went up.
Gotcha, okay, yeah, there's our forty. So, it's, that's, that's the big highlight for IT, other than that, we've been trying to maintain pretty much an even keel, we've been steadily moving off of the old in-house infrastructure as much as we can, uh, we've been steadily deploying more and more of the, uh, upgraded fiber network with upgraded server infrastructure on that network to reduce our operating costs even further, because we're currently using, not quite infrastructure as a service, but we're basically paying an annual support contract to keep certain switches running. Um, we're converting those to in-house autonomous switches, so we don't owe anyone after the initial cost. And that will also, that will knock several thousand dollars off of our, uh, annual operating costs.
So, basically, our IT department handles all the software for all the departments, so they're permoneyes that, say, the building department uses for all their, um, permitting, um, scheduling and, you know, people paying fees and things, that's through IT, the websites through IT, um, all the mail servers, and a number of the other software systems that other departments have, uh, even, um, lease, leases for multi.
Multifunction hardware, yeah. Basically, the giant walk-up printer, scanner, copiers that, uh, all the departments use for their day-to-day functions are becoming, are flowing along the path, the plan we've been doing for a few years, gotta try to consolidate IT costs into one spot, so that we don't, you guys aren't reviewing IT costs for a half dozen or more different departments and wondering where, you know, why aren't these all in one spot? We're, we've been actively working to funnel them into one spot.
So, it's toner, it's, um, pretty much everything to do with the computers, the printers, the phones, is all through IT. So, this fifty-five thousand that you see that's an increase, it's virtually all of our software licenses and things go up a little bit every year, so that fifty-five isn't just the hosting, it's like all the costs of all those little pieces increasing.
Okay, any questions? Really? Wow, no, okay, you got some questions, yes.
I'll get one. Through you, uh, thank, thank you very much for the presentation, so I, I've actually been managing a cloud migration for a software company that I run, we're supposed to take three years, we're about five years in, we got two years left to go, so hopefully this is an easier migration for North Reading. One of the things that I, that we found on that project, though, is the way you purchase your cloud services can make a massive difference in the actual bill. So, on-demand rates versus pre-provisioning reserve instances or anything like that, is that something that we've explored, we're not at that phase yet? Uh, we're not sure how we're gonna, how we're gonna manage that, that cloud hosting bill?
The, the, well, the cloud hosting, that cloud hosting bill is with the, I'm not sure I understand the.
Are we, so is this, is this through the software providers or direct through a cloud hosting platform?
Through the software provider, like our accounting software, this is for them.
So, so it's all through the software?
Yes, yeah, so we've been going from a self, using their software self-hosted to using their software them-hosted.
And is the term, is like a one-year term, a three-year term, a five-year term?
Yes, we, we, we've been trying to keep everything on a, on a year-to-year. Um, there hasn't been, in the, in the case of Munis, there hasn't made a huge, uh, benefit to going multi-year, the discount from year-to-year is, wasn't really worth, uh, wasn't necessarily worth it versus the ease on the books of keeping our contracts nice and clean and annual, and not having to worry about encumbrery money across fiscal years to cover the service next year.
Yes, um, thank you, the, um, what other municipalities, what are they doing, are they converting to clouds also, I would imagine?
I, I think it's a mix based on, well, it's a mix based on size and how deep the coffers are. A lot of smaller towns like to go the way of the cloud, because server, server costs are significant. And the problem is, a lot of town, you know, it's not easy to come back every couple of years and go, hey, I need another two-hundred-and-fifty or three-hundred thousand dollars for a thing again. Um, people start to balk at that, after about two. This plan, sort of, is the, the most cost-effective option for the town.
It scales in some way, scaling, okay.
Yes, and we're never worrying about, oh, go, what do we do with our old servers, what do we do with this whole technology, is it viable, can we reset it, no, it's not a concern, because that responsibility is pushed onto the vendor. They're the ones maintaining the current servers, they're the ones maintaining the current, uh, redundant failover options. It relieved, we're paying someone who's in a better situ, uh, better position financially to handle those costs, and just roll that into what we're currently paying for support on the software.
Additionally, the support with Munis would be better with cloud-hosted, because when it's not, everyone tends to be on a different level of update. So, sometimes when you run into a problem, like recently our, um, the TCM, which produces all the images like of our scan checks, that type of thing, failed. So, they have to jump through hoops, and even our abatement program to process our real estate abatements failed. So, they have to jump through hoops to figure out what level we're at, what our server is, try to make everything work together, and recently on both, they struggled. So, if it's cloud-hosted, it stays up-to-date, um, and they're, they will respond faster.
Mr. Keller?
Matt originally came to the Capitol to be, uh, looking for a, with a capital request to buy the hardware. And we, we went through that with him, and it became apparent that that was, in our mind anyway, the, the wrong way to go, so, he was asked, if you weren't concerned about the source of your funds, being capital or operating, which would you prefer, which makes the most sense? And when he came back, he said, well, going to the cloud makes the most sense, but it would be a hit to the operating budget and not spread out on, on a, on a capital budget over, over some period of time, but it just wasn't the right way to go. So, we encouraged him to think about it and come back, and he did, and gave us this, this presentation, which is, I think, superior to, to the original one, because it could cost a little more, um, in the operating budget, but it will save my end either free cash or debt service or however we would have paid for the capital, so I think, I think this.
I was gonna say, again, we benefit from the, by, by entrusting these cloud providers to host, host the software solution. We're freeing up the town from the inevitable secondary cost of, well, great, now we've got the new solution, but, you know, it, it behooves us to have a backup, to have a failover in case something happens. None of the buildings in this town are brand spanking new, they're all prone to life, for lack of a more gentle term. Um, so as a result, it, this gives us that confidence of failover. If something horrible happened to one of these buildings, uh, who was ever working in that building could easily connect from anywhere else. Heck, if the room we're in fell into a sink, if this whole building fell into a sinkhole, everyone could, the town could still maintain instant, uh, functionality. There'd be no drop in service, there'd be no downtime, there'd be no recovery, it's there. That's one of the, also one of the reasons we moved our, we're moving our mail, we're about ninety-five percent in the cloud, there's just a few machine and software-related email accounts that I haven't moved over. But again, we did that for the same reason, the maintenance, the, the needs for a proper failover environment, they add up, they're expensive. Going into the cloud, yeah, you pay a little bit more out of operating, but all of those concerns are effectively whisked away. You have your failover, you have your access, you have your, these are the updates, whether you want them or not, you're gonna stay at a supported codebase level.
Mr. Chair three, sorry, does, does your budget include school services as well?
No.
No, it's strictly.
No, the school owns their, the school has their own stuff, they got their own IT staff, their own IT budget, and they have a completely unconnected system to ours. The only thing they contact us for is Munis.
Yeah, they do use our, like, that, the accounting and payroll.
Anyone else? I agree, cloud is the future, and when something changes on a dime, like, window stops supporting it. Oh, yeah, I was gonna say, I don't know enough shit, let's move on. It's fine, it's due. All right, cool, thank you.
Good job, you did a good job of pivoting, which was great.
It goes with the turf.
Yeah, makes sense.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, you know, I'm McKay, the treasurer collector, um, we'll start with the, my treasurer's budget, um, so. So, just, just a little, um, a little, um, the functions that we do in the treasurer's department. Um, the, the treasurer's department only has the salaries for myself, um, a stipend, and then for the assistant treasurer collector. Um, all the expenses are in my collector's budget, but this is just an overview of what the treasurer's department actually, what we actually do. So, we process all the payroll checks, we print them, the direct deposits for all the employees, including the school. The school does their own, um, payroll, we just combine them to, for the direct deposit and the tax files and all that. Um, they put all the, um, their employees in, we do all the, the school, I mean, excuse me, the town side, so police, fire, DPDW, library, council manager. We file all the taxes and the monthly retirement, um, reports, um, we, we send out the payroll deductions, and we send out the payroll checks. We do the ten ninety-nines, the W twos, um, sorry, the ten ninety-five Cs, we mail out the, um, ten ninety-nines. Um, we issue and pay for all the debt, um, we, I balance fifty-two bank accounts monthly and thirty-eight investment accounts quarterly.
Quick question. The, um, printing and mailing of the W twos, the ten ninety-five Cs, et cetera, um, is it true that there's a potential that, um, you don't necessarily have to mail that to people by January thirty-first anymore, you could actually give it to them by electronic mail?
I heard that, that could be something, um, but as of right now.
Just knowing the postage costs, I'm trying to look for anything I can, but that might be something that I think North Reading should consider, um, because of the huge postage cost on that side.
Right, I know that we do for direct deposit, we do send down an advice, so there's only a handful of checks, payroll checks that we physically mail. Um, if, if it's a school week, it could be maybe fifty to seventy-five, if it's, if it's, um, a weekly payroll, it might be ten. So, we do send it out that way for the direct deposits. So, in the collections, um, I have, um, there's five of us in my department, so I have three full-time staff, and then I have my assistant, and then I have myself. Um, we collect all the real estate, personal property, water, trash, we do the demands, um, usually there's a bill due every month. Um, usually there's a bill due every month, um, taking all the treasurer's receipts for all the departments, even the schools, they come over. We post all those um in balance with accounting, um, all the municipal lease certificates go through our office and we issue all the refunds and um any other payments on on the accounts. Um, this is just a quick overview of the approximate bills that we send out on an yearly basis. Um, you can see each year that they they are going up. Um, I'm not gonna read all of them, but you can see that every year the the amount is And then for my um request for my budget, um, it's, I didn't go up on my budget at all, I just moved some lines. So I decreased the professional services by thirty-seven fifty and I increased the potions by thirty-seven um twenty-five. Um, and then I decreased the clothing allowance because there that's contractual and it was taken out of the contract for my for my staff, for the annual week, for the um Marissa contract, they took it out of their contract, so took it out of the budget.
Okay. Ms. McKay, do you have anything else before I take questions?
No.
Okay. Uh, questions? Ms. Earl.
Oh, you're talking to me?
Yeah.
Um, for a number of years, we talked about trying to combine the water bill with um a quarterly tax bill or something else, and time's just in jive, but I noticed that you send out a ton of tax bills, of which I am pleased to be part of at least one. Um, is there any way we can do that electronically, um, following up on Mr. Massey's uh question about um other bills?
Um, not that I know of. Um, it can be something we can probably look into. I know um some towns do send out motor vehicle bills um through email, but that takes a lot of upkeep in on that. Um, we can look into it and we can get back to you on it, but I don't know of any community that physically sends out real estate bills or water bills through email. But we can look into it and get back to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I've seen a, I think maybe if you can give like an op in, like a paperless option, right, rather than negative consent, which then somebody can say and get the bill versus like you went there and you signed up for like paperless billing, like you can do for anything. I think a lot of people take advantage of that, maybe come up with a way to give that option, because then if you sign up for it, also it's kind of on the user too to maintain their email address, not just on the town. Like, you know, if you sign up and put your email address and then you don't get it, it's like, well, you did it, not us. So, you know, not you to pay.
Yeah, I'll I'll definitely look into it and and report back to see.
Yeah, you just let those through for TA, that's fine. Thank you. Mr. Mas.
Um, how many properties in North Reading have, this might be the wrong departments of correct name from now, have delinquent taxes? And how do we chase them down?
So there is a process that we do. So um right now, um, we're in the process of doing our tax title, which would be last year's taxes, so FY twenty-four taxes. Um, we sent out two, I believe it was like two hundred delinquency letters. Um, I don't know off the top of my head how many are still delinquent. We did send it to our tax title attorney. So what happens usually in April or May, we do a tax title, um, where we actually put a lien on a person's property and we take it and we put it into um tax title. So it comes off our books as real estate owed, it goes into the tax title bracket. Um, and then they did just um decrease the amount for the interest on tax title, it used to be sixteen percent, and the legislator just decreased it to eight percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, so um that was as of November. So uh but that's that's done on an yearly basis. So anybody that's delinquent last year, it will go into tax title in April or May of this year. So it's usually last last year, the year before, um, it could have been twenty-five people. We do have to put it in the newspaper um and advertise it for a couple of weeks beforehand, and then um they have two weeks to pay before we actually put the lien on the property. So, but that's done every year.
Thank you very much.
It's generally the same cast of characters.
Usually.
Yeah.
Usually they'll pay off and then and then hold.
So is there any way to, I mean, if it's the same people doing it?
They pay the pay the penalties, they pay the interest, they pay the fees.
Yeah.
So the town's not losing anything other than some resources here chasing them down, but the town's not losing a dime.
As long as they're paying.
Yeah, and once it's once it's in tax title, we do um go through the process of, you know, putting um filing it with them in court and we can eventually foreclose on the property. We don't like to do that, um, but it could come down to if they don't pay, we could foreclose on their property. Last resort.
Why wouldn't we foreclose?
Um, there's a lot of reasons we wouldn't. It could be owner occupied, it could be um it could be deplorable, um, it could be um.
Mr. Obrador, you had your hand up?
Yes, it's usually two things. Yeah, there's either a tenant or somebody we can get involved in evicting, that that can be a challenge, we have to find our way through that, uh, because we do become liable. And then just environmental, you know, circumstances could be hazards on the property. So we try to be thoughtful, but it's sort of a balance of applying the pressure through the process, but no way we're getting into. Um, I would say, you know, during the pandemic, we were much more relaxed because of the concern about people's ability to pay. Um, but I think we've, you know, each year since have ramped back up our efforts, including the tax title that Ms. McKay just mentioned. Um, but those are rare instances, I mean, usually it's, you know, somebody feels the pressure, they pay. Uh, it's usually the same people. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Who is everyone today?
Fabulous, how are you?
A little tired. I've gotta be honest. Uh, before I get into dive into my budget, I do have two things that I'd like to bring to everyone's attention. My assistant Paula has recently passed one of her big courses, which leads her towards her designation for her assessor. So I'm very proud of her. It has been four years, you know, working with her, training her, getting her to understand the ins and outs in in the municipal calendar of an assessor's world. And the other one I'd like to recognize is Carol Garafalo, who is our newest employee. She's been with us a year next month, and she's she's a breath of fresh air and she's so great with taxpayers and and really a very quick learner. She's been a lot of help and does everything, you know, willing to take on any task there is. So without my girls, as I call them, the assessor's office really won't sell good. I just want to say that. So moving forward, so the assessor's budget really did not change much. Um, I'm not looking for any more. I did make a few cuts. Actually, let's see, which one am I gonna use? Let's start here. Oh.
We're down way over. Go down to the assessment.
Yeah, and then keep going down. Right there. Let me just get my rightful spot here. So the assessor's department functions, I'm not gonna dive deep into this because it really is latent. It it is what it is. We generate one seventy-two percent of the revenue that that operates the community. We maintain values for both real estate, personal property, motor vehicle. There were eighteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-five excise tax bills and revenue of over three point five billion. We're also responsible for granting any personal exemptions, such as our veterans, such as our elderly, so on and so forth. We also defend our values at the appellate tax board if necessary. We don't have too many cases. The accomplishments for twenty twenty-five, as I said, the office is running very smoothly. Um, we certified values, had a timely recap, timely tax bills, and maintain the town's GIS mapping. Fiscal twenty twenty-five, the assessor's office this year will be in what we call an interim certification year. So I'm gonna dive a little bit deeper into this because next year, we're in a full revaluation. When I tell you it's a full revaluation, it is a double duty year. That means that every single one of my values in this town, it's not just reporting, there's much of that, but every value in this town goes in front of the department revenue. It will take our office from April of next year to certification in October. And to get those tax rates for an October bill during the interim year, we don't find any issues with that usually because we're giving them their stuff ahead of time, number one, but also because it's an interim. So to be on top of that and to make sure that we have a certified tax rate for twenty-seven, you will see um in a warrant article for the revaluation. So I'm just giving you an effort upon that. Um, we generated new growth, um, some of our new growth was actually using methods from our new mapping system. We do use two mapping systems. Some may wonder why. Well, the CAI does our butters list, that is revenue generated also. But we've found this near map system. If I can't get in their backyard to measure their pool, their shed, their deck, whatever, I can measure it right from that system. And I have, we have generated a lot of value because it's not just the permits. Sometimes I I could be driving into work and go, wait a minute, why do they have that out there? Why is there a bulldozer in there? Why is there a mini in there? So we have uh we've done really well using our near maps. A best investment ever, in my opinion. Okay. So to round my my um my presentation, the professional service budget I did reduce by five thousand two hundred and ninety. I did that because looking forward to the revaluation, one of the criterias for certification is that I am up to date on what's called my cyclical inspections. How many houses have I gone to? How many commercial properties have I gone to? How many exempt parcels? Yes, we have to measure the charges. How many of those are we in compliance with that? Well, I've been very aggressive in the last three years, so we have an Excel spreadsheet plus the reporting out of our database that tells me for this year, I could cut that budget by five thousand two hundred and ninety, and we're gonna be in compliance for next year. I'm not saying I'm gonna cut it next year for five thousand two hundred and ninety, I didn't say that, but.
Remind us, remind us next year what you're looking for.
I might bring both presentations to you. Uh, postage was increased by seventy dollars. The majority of that is due to our personal exemptions. So the person the personal exemptions, if you file for veterans, if you file for seniors, those are due April first, and I'm gonna repeat that at the end of my presentation. And what happens, sometimes they either don't get it into us or they forget to file. So we start with a mailing and usually the end of February, beginning of March, we'll send them a letter. If we don't hear from them by the middle of March, then we're calling them, hey, we didn't get your application. So that was the increase in the um in the postage. Travel was reduced, and again, I'm gonna use my near maps. Um, due to memberships, dues and memberships did increase, that's unfortunate. I have no control over that. My Tyler Canvas Software, which is my appraisal system, increased three hundred and ninety-five dollars. What am I gonna do? Tell them, no, I need it. Uh, both the MAAO, which is Massachusetts Assessant Association, and the Middlesex County, their dues went up also. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Questions? Start this side.
Oh, good.
We'll go to this side. Thank you.
I am.
Clients?
I am.
Okay.
So the one thing before I leave, if there's anybody on public, if you typically file or if you wanna see if you qualify, April first, four P M is the last opportunity that I can take an application. If you're coming in to see if you qual qualify, try to make it around three thirty so we can go through this stuff. Um, that being said, you know, we, I don't have jurisdiction after that. So if you haven't gotten your application into us and or if you wanna see if you qualify, please come in and see us. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Lauren, you're just gonna move over.
Okay. Uh, so similarly, I just put together some functions. So in the assessor's department, through finance and accounting, finance, um, I have, well, it's supposed to be two staff members, me and assistant finance director right now, that position's still vacant. Um, and then in accounting, I have two positions, my executive administrative assistant and then a um accounting analyst. So the finance functions, I think most everyone knows, but um I just thought it was important that we just kinda recap. We do prepare the annual operating budget, the capital budget, um, and we also are responsible for the balance sheet submission and free cash certification, the recap sheet, which sets our tax rate every year. Um, Schedule A is a recap of all of our revenues and all of our expenses. Um, we have to submit that to the state. We have the annual audit of um all of our revenues and expenses. We additionally have an audit of our federal grants, which is called the single audit. We have a workers' comp audit. We have an annual um post-employment benefit actuarial study that we're responsible for. We have to track the fixed assets and we track all the estimated receipts. So, you know, all the different audits, a lot of checks and balances, so we are responsible for all of those things. Then on the accounting side, so every invoice in town goes through the accounting department, whether it be school, they do their batches, enter them, we review literally every um every departmental invoice, it's ours. Um, we also by the same token review all purchases before, anything that requires a requisition, generally over five hundred dollars, we're responsible for compliance with um. We also by the same token review all purchases, like anything that requires a requisition, generally over $500. We're responsible for compliance with all the Massachusetts laws as far as purchasing requirements. We issue the checks to vendors. We issue the 1099s. All the revenue that goes through the collectors' office, we ultimately review and post. And we're responsible for monitoring the grant expenditures and making sure we get the receipts for the grants. So on the accounting side, what we did was I reduced the financial analyst or the accounting analyst position from 35 to 27 and a half. It was, in fact, the employee's request. It's a net savings of $8,165, offsetting with the contractual obligations of the other staff members. So when I was Assistant Finance Director, my position was 30 hours. The Finance Director was 35. Currently, I have the Assistant Finance Director in for 35, so it's almost just a swap. In the last few years, we shot it out behind, but I'm happy to say we're, we did it. We're on target. We even finished our 24 audit last week. We got the final audit back from the auditors. We are up to date. Finally caught up.
We're in three years worth of work to do that.
Yeah, right? We went through four audits in two years.
Good question, Lauren. The, what is the hours, excuse me, what is the hours threshold for what triggers employee benefits?
20.
20, okay.
20 hours, yeah.
Just curious, thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to slow you down.
No, that's okay.
Highlight that again, that's a huge accomplishment.
Yeah, my staff is absolutely fantastic. The other departments hate us, restrict. But we work together and just very, very, very thorough, dedicated. And they're just across the board, they're just great staff. Finance division, the whole division, everyone who spoke tonight, as well as my direct staff, they're just perfect. And then as far as expenses, fortunately, the audit, we had to transition last year. We had Markham for a couple of years and we singed switch to Roselli and Clark. The Markham had let us know that they were going, their costs were going to be escalating substantially. So their quote was like $20,000 above where it was previously. So we went with Roselli. It was an increase, but it was reasonable. But it's just all the little pieces, like the OPEB actuarial study. We have a consultant helps us just a little bit at the close of the year and submitting the balance sheet. Those costs have increased. And then, but to try to offset it, I reduced the training and education. The line was just so high because we used to do a lot of travel and a lot of the classes are now either online or like I don't go to the Munis trainings that are, you know, obviously that type of thing. And then like Marion had already mentioned, the clothing was taken out of the clerical contract and the travel line has also decreased again because we just don't travel as much. So we tried to offset as many increases as possible, but that's the bottom line to our budget.
Let me start with Finance. Any question for Finance?
No, thank you, sir.
Board members?
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you for getting up to speed, appreciate it.
Again, Angela, what you do for us, night and day, day and night, weekends, is not necessarily really, check your hourly rate, it's below. So we appreciate all that you do. A lot of people don't see it, but those of us here do. We appreciate it very much and your staff and all that goes on.
Thank you. Did you have to go over to the next, you have to hop over to the next seat again?
Yeah, I think I'm trying to buy share.
Mr. Chair, it's okay if we could take the Human Resources budgets and Mr. Collins?
Yep.
Get out of there later. And then I'll take the last, I guess, questions.
While that's going up, select board members, Finance Committee, Town Administrator, fellow department heads, taxpayers, thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to present tonight. I realize I'm as late in the lineup, so I've kept it very brief. Human Resources Department, my name is Robert Collins. And for the last eight years, I've been your Human Resources Director. Allison Olson, who has served the town for the last 15, has been benefits coordinator and continues to be so. We've adopted a new motto, serving those who serve the North Reading community. Recruitment retention and market challenges, dedicated employees are the town's greatest asset, in our opinion. Recruitment and retention, we've seen some positive signs in fiscal year 2025. The town had 27 openings of all types and makes and types. We're not talking seasonal, down from 42 in 2024 in 10 departments. This generally is a positive retention year over year. To put it in context, there's a couple of things in here, one of which is to fill the positions over the last year, we've partnered with the various departments to make sure that they have quality candidates and hired a good choice, you know, narrowing it down to the best of the best. And we reviewed over 500 applications, conducted approximately 250 interviews, including callbacks. Now, some departments, like Police and Fire, very few applicants relatively speaking. Particularly, you know, in Fire, there's the civil service system that we help maintain and go along with the Fire Department on. In others, if we go for less expensive, which we strive to do, things like Indeed, we can get 1,000 applications and we have to kind of slog through them. Most significant anticipated challenge is keeping pace with comparable communities in terms of investing in employee compensation in order to retain and attract talented individuals. The board members partner with the Town Administrator, Finance, and myself. When we sit at the bargaining table, we see the data. And we have not looked to be the premier in terms of compensation by any means, but at a certain point, if you slip too far behind, you run the risk of, you know, subpar service or losing a great deal of institutional knowledge. The greatest challenge of any departments do tend to be our public safety departments, particularly where, you know, we have a goal within the Fire Department for our medics and in the Police Department in general, it is nationwide that serves throughout the Commonwealth. Just as putting it in a certain context, the Society of Human Resource Management estimates the cost of turnover depending on a number of factors, but the average cost is about six to nine months of employee salary. And so we continue to work diligently to the extent we have a heads up from our department heads or staff that there's going to be an opening. We strive to get ahead of that, get that out there and do the best we can. I just as a year over year, because I thought we've done in the past, kind of where we were at, where we're at, going back from 23 to the current request, not counting the schools, kind of just, you know, where we kind of sit in there. And then I think, it's blocking me a little bit, but employees, retirees, dependents who are served by your HR department. The town, just the town has 134 full-time employees, 47 regular part-times, 121 seasonal employees. Those are the folks that help run elections, help run programs and approximate recreation. And during the last year, there's approximately 800 ETFs. I would have had an exact number, but the software we use no longer tracks it on a yearly basis. So we went back three months and then it was in. We also do the benefits for the schools in terms of health insurance. And so in total, we're responsible for overseeing the onboarding and day-to-day issues concerning over 1,000 individuals. So that's retirees, dependents, as well as employees. We all know that that is a big driving factor in terms of recruitment and retention. And we're doing it at 70/30, where a lot of, you know, a lot of other communities are at an 85/15 kind of rate. I also, I would be remiss if I didn't single out amongst our partners, Lauren has helped me, you know, numerous times and I hope I do the same for her. I do not think that there's a lot of resentment that she says, you know, with the finance. I refer to when someone is complaining, it's the department that keeps us from breaking the law and allows us to afford all of the things we need to do. So, you know, Excel rounded up our total, looking at an increase from, it would be 2.5%. It says 3%, but we talked about that, that was a situation. We're looking at basically a mini reorg. The last eight years, I've strove to take the benefits coordinator position and make it into something far more fitting. You know, I, as much as I have additional staff, that's not realistic. So taking the staff that I have, Allison Olson, who's been is the initial public face in many instances to prospective employees, to new employees, to retirees, and getting her beyond her comfort zone and, you know, as just a benefits coordinator into, in a practical sense, being a position that I'm looking to codify now, which is Human Resource Generalist and Benefits Coordinator. Can have a lot more functionality. She's in many respects doing it. It would also remove her from the NUE bargaining unit that has a lot of legacy benefits. And again, I remember a while back, Lauren and I were discussing a couple of department heads that we were trying to look at. What would it take if we were to, you know, look at the expenses of those, project them out? Some of those payouts would equal points of change. If you have any questions, again, I wanted to keep it to the point. It's been a pleasure working with you all, but I got to say that, you know, I have fire municipal experience on both sides of the table and I've worked in multiple states. And the employees that we have here are truly dedicated. They are not siloed. They do not look at it as, that's not my job, that's the other guy's job or the other guy's department. They look at, how can we help? And, you know, it is, I think, the function of HR to help identify people that fit that culture, that support that culture, that grow that culture and to continue to do so and give a voice, you know, when they are having a frustration or a little bit of a challenge. And I think we've been able to successfully, again, not alone, it is a team event by every stretch of the imagination, accomplish what we set out to do.
Any questions? Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about Allison's position. So you've increased her workload?
Yes, what I've been doing is, when I, I'll tell you, when I first sat down with her eight years ago, I said, if you think that doubling the size of the department from one to two people is going to result in a lesser workload, it's the dirtiest trick the town's ever played on. You will have more work than you've ever had, but it's my job to make it interesting, challenging, and get you to connect with mission more than you've ever had. And I have to say, you know, there are always little stumbling blocks, but she has committed herself. I remember early on, you will take the following courses. Then the next year was, okay, you identify half the courses. Now you're on your own. I want to know which courses you want, what courses you need, and I want to know why. We went from formal department meetings to, we're constantly in touch. We're constantly, you know, there isn't a day that goes by and, you know, at the end of every day, I make an appointment to thank her and it's earned.
Well, I mean, I know how great she is, so I'm just concerned, like, she's okay with the extra workload?
Yes, because...
I wouldn't want to see us losing her.
She wouldn't be here tonight. I told her she didn't have to. She said, that's good because she was proven sticky. So I said, well, you win. But no, at every step of the way, this wasn't something, you know, forced down. This was, you know, here's something you feel comfortable in doing so. And there were times that she would say no. And then my response was, but can you? Can you try? And then there were a few times, okay, we're not going to do this now. Let's revisit it, let's see what needs to go on. Because as the needs of the town, take for instance, the Fire Department in terms of its size growth or DPW or anything else, we need to be able to service these people so they don't have to worry about their HR needs. It's being taken care of. We also have to make sure, and one of the things, by the way, I think it really needs to be said because this, I would like to say is true of 351 communities. As HR Director, I want the public, the taxpayers, to know that I have never received a phone call from a select board member saying, hire this person or don't hire this person. It's been a purely merit system all along and that's part of the key to our success. No one's ever tried to exert some sort of influence or anything else. And, you know, and it's similar. I have her doing some of the interviews now. I do some of the other ones. We divide it up, we figure out what needs to be done. But yes, she's, she supports this. And by the way, she also admits that she feels ready for this challenge.
Great. Glad to hear it.
Finance? Okay, thank you, Mr. Collins.
Thank you all. I hope you have a pleasant evening. Oh, and one last thing before I leave. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Yes.
And to those of you who have perhaps a more, you know, historical bend, Happy Evacuation Day. Thank you, Bob. Thank you.
I used to get that holiday.
Yes.
Just a little earlier, so many of you, the next three?
Yeah, the last three, yeah, we'll handle it. Do not have a PowerPoint presentation if I can speak to each of the budgets. I'll start with Town Council. So there are three adjustments that I have proposed in the budget that all reflect the trend in our utilization, but also the possibility that we may either see additional rate increases or fall to the board's discussion, I think in September, about going to the market and evaluating what options are out there as well for Town Council. So trying to insulate us so that we have options in next fiscal year. That resulted in roughly a $60,000 increase in general legal services, but there was an offset of a $31,000 decrease, sorry, general legal services, $31,000 decrease in general labor council services. So there's a bit of an offset, but an overall increase. And a $1,500 reduction for a legal subscription that we don't want to utilize. So again, it was a bit, I will say, conservative, well, it's hard to describe it. A little more aggressive in how I projected it out because I want us to have a budget available to whatever we identify our needs are and not wanting, cost will be a factor in deciding, I'm sure, but it doesn't need to be the only factor. And as we get closer towards resolving the budget deficit, we may look more closely. We may recommend an adjustment here or there or that. But it is a substantial increase. It does reflect the trend. The past couple of years, our legal expenses were in excess of $130,000, which we're annually appropriating. We did need to go for, I think, a reserve fund transfer one year and a town meeting transfer another year.
And I'll just mention before we do that, that with the 40B, coming back to the ZBA, we have to take into account with that, you know, the ZBA is going to be leaning on an attorney who's going to be there, I think, almost every meeting that they have. So again, those are, those are just something that like, we know that for a fact, like that's going to be doable offers.
So a component of it is here and a component is in an article that we have as well about that could be re-appropriated with that purpose, too. Sorry.
Mr. Massey?
Sorry, do you mind? So it was the contract change that provided this increase, right?
So no, it's a projection, you know, based on the discussion I thought I heard from the board. Here we want to look at the market. And I'm just trying to make sure we're in, to the extent possible, the most advantageous position financially because not knowing what the market's going to bring for us. We may adjust this depending upon how the trend this fiscal year continues. So it may not need to be that big a number. And I'm not saying it will necessarily even increase. I just didn't want to see us in a position going into town meeting where we were too underfunded if we were considering a change.
What's that total again?
It's a total of, I think, $160,000, $158,000 even, excuse me. That's a net $27,500 increase from last year. But like I said, we were over the budget last year as well for a couple of different reasons. So it's partially the trend as well. So it's a little hybrid of those two things.
Just curious, what would you put as a ballpark, $20,000 rating ballpark? What would it cost for the town to have our own Town Council? What would it cost for the town to have our own town council?
To hire an attorney?
In-house.
For a single attorney? I mean, I would guess it would be a little more than that salary to get somebody qualified, but my concern would be...
Plus the benefits.
Plus the benefits. But my, you know, there's obviously the cost, but the capacity is the issue. You know, in some places, it's able to work with one person doing everything. The structure we have right now, as you've seen from, you know, a number of different folks who are available to us, granted...
I asked the same thing a couple of years ago.
It's a good question. It's something we've thought about. You generally see in-house council of larger community, but you know, something that we can look at, especially as we go through the procurement process, what we have with what we see.
Last time we had one was 1988.
That was the same year you started on the board.
Yeah. I didn't support it either.
Yeah. That's how I could tell.
It wasn't a good deal.
Thirty-three years in the room.
It was not a good deal. It lasted about 20 happy years.
On the legal?
No, and again, what we get from having a firm is we get diversity of specialties. I'm just supposed to, I'm supposed to manage us. The cost is less.
Finance?
Through you, Mr. Carr. Just from my own knowledge and maybe anybody else's, is the, is the, are the legal services, is there a fixed and a variable cost there or is it all billable?
Sure, so it is all billable, billable hours.
I think the rate is $235 an hour. Is that the last...
It's phenomenal. That's a, it's a two-tiered system. That's a base rate. They have a handful of attorneys who are sort of specialists, but there are deals at a higher rate for that, but it's all hourly. So, every hour is billed. There's, you know, limited amount of reimbursement cost, but it's most hourly.
Okay.
Next, which one you want to touch on? TA or what?
I'll take a minute. Wait, can I skip over something? I'm sorry.
You did.
That was not intentional. Am I getting a raise?
Get, yes, we're going to get a hundred percent of zero.
You're going to get a raise. You're going to double your salary.
We're doing good.
So, just two changes to this budget. We had a $3,729 decrease in salaries and that's due to contractual obligation and new contract. And then we had a $500 reduction in expenses. So, we had about $1,000 that was appropriated. It wasn't really getting utilized. We've only spent, I think, less than $100 in recent years, but keeping it there. So, you should know it's available to the board as an expense, whether it's for training or the, you know, purpose that comes up. I tend to absorb a lot of the costs out of town administrator's budget as well, but as you know, we're not paying a salary, you know, other than for, you know, he's in the office here and then here at the meetings. To address the issue, I think, you know, most of the board members know this, but any reaction on salary compensation for select will be separate from this and the vote from town meeting that will take place. But we've talked about that, I think, over the years. But that's it for the select board budget.
Any questions? Finance?
Mr. Gonzalez, as you're exiting here, maybe you want to make another pitch to him.
Listen, I've been pitching it every year. It's been sticking. I think every select board member deserves a pay.
Well, Steve asked for back pay, so we couldn't...
I know, I asked him back. I did. I wanted retro.
Didn't afford the back pay.
I wanted retro.
Mr. Jim, through you for the town administrator's budget, the final budget for this evening. Just a handful of changes first. Decreased our purchase of supplies by $800 based upon the trend of expenditures. For purchase of services, there was an increase of $1,300, so that's a net increase of $500. In terms of the town meetings, I added, because we've experienced a third town meeting each of the past couple of years, so I added that as an expense. I'll be candid with you, that's probably somewhere I'm going to look to reduce as a budget balancing exercise and sort of deal with that through either the finance committee or through transfer town meetings later in the fiscal year. But I did put that increase in because we have had a couple of years of three town meetings. They usually budget for only the two annual meetings. So, that's a total of $17,000. And then the salaries, so there was both an increase in contractual obligation, but also a significant decrease in here for an add of $23,639. That's largely due to last year's budget having an overlap period between my former and now retired administrative assistant and her successor, who's now the current administrative assistant. So, that's where you see that reduction.
Questions? Finance?
Just quickly, just on the number of articles maybe in the joint town meeting, I wouldn't be shocked if it, there are a lot of subjects too, so I wouldn't be shocked if it went to that. So, it's...
But we have the clickers. So, no one can, you know, that's, that shaved off our lead two and a half hours. Thank you. Thank you.
Page two.
Okay. We're going to, unofficial recess, I'm not going, I don't have to call out, I'm just going to stay, I'm going to stare at the plan.
So, next item, before we start that, we're gonna go over the warrant article list, which is long, because there's a lot going on in it. But I'd just like to remind everyone that this is probably the first of at least of four meetings when we're gonna go through it. And two of them are, one is gonna be a public hearing as well, another one is gonna be inevitably as well when we, when the CPC talks about it as well. So I'm only mentioning that because I think there's still a lot of questions on, there's a lot of information. We're just going through this list the first time, so as we go through it, if we don't have all the answers, just know that, you know, we'll have them. But from my experience, I think this is the first round about, so. And we have forty of them, as of right now, forty.
Yeah, that's a two longer.
Just gonna bring my pillow to town meeting. So, Mr. Gobero.
I'm gonna share this, actually, if I can. I'm sorry, I'm having some trouble with Zoom.
And if you want to say the first twenty are housekeeping, and get the twenty-one, I won't object, I won't, I won't do anything but just handle it.
Sure, yeah, to that point, articles one through twenty-two, I would consider sort of annual administrative articles proposed by the town administrator. Housekeeping, if you will, so that takes us all the way through.
Hold on, no, no, we'll do, Mr. Matt, if you have a question, go ahead, please.
Sorry, the only thing I, I select town officers, I just didn't know.
If there's a, so that's something that town meeting needs to authorize a select board to do for positions that are not authorized in a state law, or in charter, or anywhere else. It just makes sure that there's somebody who's authorized to appoint the officers. Most of the town's employees are appointed by the town administrator, most of the members of boards, committees, and commissions are appointed by the select board. But for those few where it's not specified, it makes clear that the select board's the appointing board. Thank you.
You're welcome. Excuse me? I don't think you're sharing, or it's not, okay.
Okay, so that takes us all the way through the, how did that do?
Twenty-three. Too bad, we can't do that town meeting with the first twenty-three.
I know.
Hit yes or no when you click it, thank you.
So, again, that takes us all the way through to the capital expenditures and town building and repairs, so that includes the operating budget, all the transfers required heading out of and into one fiscal year into the next. So, picking up with Article twenty-three, this is an article that the treasurer and I have been discussing with the town clerk on with regard to tax title procedures. Just putting that on there as an item, it'll be for discussion in an upcoming warrant article. It's something where the town would need to adopt a state statute regarding the procedures. I don't have them in front of me, but I just wanna make folks aware that that's coming. Articles twenty-four through thirty, I, sorry, right, sorry, twenty-four through thirty. I flagged them all with asterisks, and the reason for that is because I wanted to point folks to the comments below Article thirty, which referenced the action plan that was submitted earlier this year after discussion here with the board. These Articles twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, they all refer to the lower row multi-family zoning overlay district, or MBTA zoning, in the form that it was considered at the fall annual town meeting and defeated at the October town meeting. Articles twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty are similarly MBTA zoning, but they would be for a split with zoning at, only being at Edgewood and not Edgewood and Martin's Landing, and then on the Main Street corridor in the currently mixed-use zoned area. I know that the Community Planning Commission has had some discussion about both alternatives. To be clear, they have not submitted these articles, and they are not the sponsor of these articles. They're appearing on this list mostly because of the certification that I included in the packet and had to submit to the state that said that I would follow through with the process for the community to consider alternatives for MBTA zoning. I'm not sitting here recommending the articles one way or the other. I'm putting them before you because they are the totality of the options that I've heard of from, you know, leading into this town meeting. To be clear, they would not just appear on the warrant because they're in this list. I think the board would need to take a position that it supports them being on the warrant or not. But the, the reason that they're on there is because of the certification that I had to attest to with the state, that I would shepherd a process and provide this option. It does not mean that they must be considered by town meeting, it does not mean that the select board must put them on the warrant, but I did feel, because I signed this document, that I had an obligation to bring them to you here. And subsequently, you know, you've received three citizens petitions as well, and I'll get to on that. So they're listed as administrative because I felt an obligation to put them up. They have not been submitted by any other board or official, and you are not bound to put them on the warrant. And in fact, I would say, you know, the board's action should not be whether or not to take them off of this list, but should be whether or not to include them on the list.
Okay, and I'll just say, like I said from the beginning when it comes to this, it's the CPC who, thank you, Mr. Gobero, for putting them here, because they're here, right? And we've used placeholders before for other stuff.
Right.
But when we have those joint meetings, because I think there's one before the public hearing, where we do have a joint meeting with the CPC, they're gonna have to give us some color on this, like, hey, we put them here, tell, like, what, what's your thing? Because again, it's gotta, the lead's gotta be there. And I know right now they got whatever going on, but that's not really, at the end of the day, our problem, to be honest. Like, so they have to come back with something, and then, at that point, if we feel like it, we can determine what we wanna determine. But thank you for at least putting them here, so it's like, they're here, because they can be removed and played with, so, there's so many. But it's all talking about the same thing, everybody knows how, we don't have to go through it again. I mean, I think we've all become experts on MBTA at this point, you know?
I'll just bring it up in the business.
Mr. Gobero, go ahead.
Okay, so continuing along, there were six articles that were submitted by department board commissioner committees, and then down below I had citizens petitions. So Hillview Commission is working on a potential project to consider the future of the function building, specifically asking for funding to potentially demolish the function building. So that's one of the articles that we'll see in the draft warrant. The revaluation, which the assessor mentioned to you during her budget presentation, she's identified that.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, through you.
Yeah.
Can I get a little bit more info on the function building? And I don't, I don't wanna irritate this process, but did we just fund six figures for, or seven figures for a new roof? And now, I don't, I don't get, I mean, this is not like a renovation project, so like, we're demolishing it, and what do we, I mean?
Mr. Chair. Excuse me, go ahead. So just to respond to that, so you recall at the October town meeting, we both appropriated additional funding for the roof repair work and funding for them to conduct an evaluation that they were gonna determine whether that was gonna even be sufficient for the repairs that need. They have not gone forward with the repair to the roof at this point in time. I don't think they've even made, tipped the interim repairs, other than maybe patching active leaks. So that work hasn't happened, and they have come to us by submitting this article proposing that in lieu of making the repairs, that the building would be torn down. So that's why you're seeing that article on there. I think they have their own thoughts about what needs to happen, but they recognize it's a town building, and they would want town meeting to weigh in on it. So I know they're gathering information that they will be before you and before town meeting with in the future, outlining what your, what the town's options are, what the costs are for those, and what the projected costs are.
So good, Mr. Chair, but if I might address a little more in depth. You recall over the last several months, since the October town meeting, I've been reporting to the board on a somewhat regular basis of their thought process and rationale for proposing this. And the thing is, you know, they recognize that the roof needs to be fixed, you know, but it doesn't fix the building. There's so much more that needs to be invested into that facility, as far as infrastructure, that would be plumbing, electrical, windows, it's substantial. It is millions of dollars that need to be invested in that building, if you're gonna bring it up to snuff. And the question comes, in the commission's mind, you know, while the roof needs to be fixed, and they're, they're patching it, and they're putting the finger in the dike right now, until this is finally determined through this board and through town meeting as to how to proceed. But from a fiscal standpoint, that facility itself, the function hall, has never been a winner for the town. We've been able to, in past years, secure sufficient funding through, basically rent, to cover the cost of maintaining the building. That hasn't been the case over the last six-plus, eight years, maybe, six to eight years, eight years probably? That hasn't been the case, and it's becoming more and more of a drain to maintain the facility. And the people who've been in there, Mr. Lee beforehand, Mr. Yever after him, and then now the current ultra chic, keep in mind that someone like Mr. Yever invested a quarter of a million dollars there and walked away, because it just wasn't making any fiscal sense from an operational standpoint to operate a pump and function hall, it wasn't working for them. So he just walked away, someone that's in the business. You know, Mr. Lee, similar situation, felt as though the facility needed significant influx of cash and maintenance and capital improvements in order to make it function better, and there was no return on that investment for the community to do that, so they can make more money. So the commission felt that it would be the responsible thing to do is to take a look at maybe abandoning the facility itself in total, giving us some cost estimate as to what that would be, and then giving us an overview as to what they see really would work there and what would need to be done to move forward. Before, we spent two million dollars on a roof on a building that should probably be bulldozed. So they said, you know, the easy route for them would have been, and this is part of the conversation there, the easy route is, you know, put the roof on, don't worry about it for fifteen years, and push it off to another commission or another board, someone else to deal with it, and continue to have a lost, a lost leader here as far as, you have a, a facility that is being utilized by outside vendors to make a living, and it's costing the town money annually to continue to operate it. So they decided that it wasn't the fiscally responsible thing to do, to just spend two-plus million dollars on a roof when we probably shouldn't be. So they're just moving forward to gather the information, to present it to the board and town meeting, and then a determination will be made. They don't have a feeling, I mean, they have some impressions and opinions as to, you know, what really would work well for the community from an enterprise standpoint, but ultimately, they recognize that it's the board and town meeting's determination as to what they wanna do with it. You know, if you're gonna try and repurpose it, again, there's a whole host of challenges with the, with the facility, so. But then it'll all come out, and they just felt that the responsible thing to do is to, before they spent the two, two-plus million dollars on the roof, provide some sort of alternative and stimulate some discussion, and a determination will be made shortly.
So I got, I got a bunch of questions, if we can rapid fire, that'd be great. So windows boilers, I heard.
Electrical, plumbing, no, not just aesthetics, not just aesthetics.
I didn't hear any structure issue there. Is it structurally unsafe?
Is it structurally unsafe? I would not say that it is structurally unsafe. There are some questions in relation to probably the decking above the pub, because we have a deck up there, but the roofing that's in there, I mean, they did reinforce it when we put the deck on top of it. The structure, the main structure, the main building itself is probably a hundred and fifty years old, maybe more.
That building?
Yeah, yeah, the, the original building, yeah. It's, yeah, it's, it's, it's hand-hewn post, yeah.
Oh, maybe, right.
Yeah.
Couple of other questions. What are we doing with that two million dollars?
Nothing, it's not being spent right now. So now, we have the money appropriated, and it hasn't been bonded for yet, so we haven't been paying anything on it yet.
Excellent. So what is the plan, demo and then what? Because all this says is demo, so you demo it.
Yeah, again, there's a plan, I mean, you'd have to put the Hillview Commission somewhere, they have a need for additional cart, new cart, storage areas, and electrical, it has to be in if you're gonna go electrical carts, things of that nature. You're talking about potentially a smaller pub-type situation to accommodate just the golfers, you know, on a seasonal basis. So they haven't gone as far, they know what their, their needs are from an operational standpoint for the golf course. They know what the needs are in relation to office space for the commission themselves and Karen to operate there, and they need some eyes on site year-round there. But as far as, you know, what works for, there isn't a need for a function hall. If you wanna service the golfers and the, and the leagues there from a pub standpoint, you don't need a huge facility.
You don't need an illusion either, but that's my opinion.
Well, again, but in order to invest in this building, it's gonna cost you millions. But anyway, so anyway, so they're looking at it, and they're going to.
My final question, Mr. Chair, would be, Mr. O'Leary, do you consider this a priority, to spend this money on the Hillview function hall in lieu of upcoming fire station, senior center, potential intergenerative?
Absolutely, because the Hillview pays its own way.
This isn't your top five?
No, no, because what I'm saying is, this does not, this never has, this never has.
This is a little bit of a shock.
No, if you, if you need to listen to it.
No, but you need to let me finish what I'm saying, and then you can.
If you were to understand how it functions, the Hillview facility has never cost the town and art running a dime. The Hillview operating costs are paid through the enterprise and funds its own projects and capital improvements.
And economically.
We're not looking for an impact on the tax, taxpayer at all. It has never happened. Didn't happen with the purchase, didn't happen with the expansion into funding Ipsutiva Park, it didn't happen when it came to redoing the football field, didn't cost the taxpayers and the town and art running ten cents.
I do have a question, though, and then we're gonna, because I think what we can do, because I would like to hear more, is when the article comes up for more discussion, maybe we can just have somebody from the Hillview as well.
Absolutely, no, 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 they're, they're.
Mr. Gobero, remind me on one thing.
Bring, bring their findings to it.
I'd like to tour that, I'd like to give me.
Yeah, you haven't been there yet?
I'll bring.
I've been to too many functions. But, Mr. Gobero, remind us to, because you're reminding me before, what are the rules with enterprise, like water enterprise, isn't there a very specific rule what that money can be used for? Meaning, there could be, yeah, no, 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 just because I.
But this is gonna be a request to the taxpayers?
No, no.
No.
No, no, town meeting, town meeting has to approve it, but it's not gonna impact the tax rate at all. The revenue source from Hillview is going to pay for it.
The demo's cheap enough, sorry, let me rephrase that. The new building that might be envisioned?
Again, we've had a significant amount of bits.
Would that be from the enterprise?
Yes, yes, yes. We have had, I can do that, because we purchased this thing about thirty-five, thirty-seven years ago. Let me just, we purchased, we purchased this like thirty-five, thirty-seven years ago, and we had a bond for like thirty years, twenty-five years to pay that down. We've taken our debt for Ipsutiva Park development and all this. So what we have now is a situation where all of those capital improvements and the bonding is coming down. So we have a significant amount of latitude within the enterprise to fund a capital project there. All of the funding that we have for capital improvements to the course are paid for, some of it through bonding, through the course and the enterprise. So our costs down there, borrowing costs have come down significantly, and over the next couple of years, even more. So we now have the bonding capacity to support something.
That's good.
So again, it, it isn't the intention of the commission, nor I think anybody here, to have an investment at Hillview cost the taxpayers anything. That was not how it was originally designed and set up, and it's been functioning extremely well for years, been able to do a lot of good things. So it's, so the debt service status has dropped off significantly, to the point where we can look at doing something else. That two million dollars didn't cost the taxpayers a dime. It's gonna, the enterprise is gonna pay for it. So, doesn't hit the tax rules, doesn't hit the tax rate. And the intention would be, whatever needs to be done there would be done within the ability of the enterprise to service the debt.
Thank you.
Next warrant article, no, I think you, yeah, go ahead.
The revaluation, so the assessor had mentioned that that would be on there for fiscal year twenty-seven, needs to be funded in advance, so that's proposed as a warrant article. The proposed thirty-third article is the programming site selection and cost estimation for Westside Fire Station, which we talked about earlier this evening in the presentation from MRI and the comments that were made afterwards. The next three came in today from the school committee. One is to authorize the naming of the multipurpose field at the campus. The second is to authorize the naming of a softball field. And then third is a request for transfer of funds into the school district reserve fund for special education, tuition, and transportation. That's a duplicate to what I also carry as a housekeeping article up above each year, but if the school committee wants to be the sponsor, there's certainly no objection on my part for that.
So this is the second unanticipated unbudgeted cost for special ed and transportation from October town meeting? Or was it January and now June? So I'm sorry, we gave them four hundred-plus thousand dollars in October, and now they're asking, so.
Sure, so there's a difference. The, the action in October was a transfer into their budget. This is a transfer into a stabilization fund that would be accessed if they are, if they have, have an unforeseen issue in their budget. So this is, this is setting money aside for any potential liability that comes up during the fiscal year. And the money's accessed, it's not by a vote of town meeting, it's actually by a joint vote of the school committee and the select board together.
So to save, yeah, that was a smut. Was it twenty years ago, was it three years ago?
Did we set this up?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, at least.
Yeah, three, four years ago, we set up this special reserve fund, because it's so much, the fluctuation in those budgets are, you'd be hundreds of thousands of.
Why did they get four hundred thousand dollars at the last town meeting?
There wasn't enough money in the stabilization fund to cover it.
Wow, so stabilization.
So we just started, we just started building the stabilization fund for unanticipated costs and swings in, in this budget. So we've just started building that fund up, and again, this past year had a significant increase of special ed students' transportation costs that weren't there the year before.
And those are state, those are state mandated.
It all depends on who was in during the summer, you know, you have no idea.
No, but seriously.
No, well, I, I know, but I.
I'm just saying, if.
School budget, you can move money around wherever you want.
Go ahead.
Mr. Gobero. So just to be clear, we didn't withdraw from the stabilization fund in the fall. We had, we updated our projections for the fiscal year, we had revenue that was available for both municipal purposes, the police and possibly fire department, I think we transferred for, and then similarly for the school department that were asked to do the same. So we didn't touch the reserve fund. That, that would have been, again, a vote of the select board and school committee.
Where was, where was the special education transportation taken from, the four hundred?
I believe it was raised and appropriate, that it was additional raised and appropriate that we had in the tax limitation, I think.
Thank you.
And that's all, I haven't looked at it tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We have received a total of four citizens petitions, they're all related to zoning. The first was for an area to be rezoned in the vicinity of Equestrian Drive, to change the acreage required for a single-family lot. And then the final three, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty on this list are submissions by citizens' petition of the zoning warrant articles that were defeated at October town meeting for MBTA zoning, amended to include a limitation on the number of units that could be built in the district, and the specifically allowing for a name restriction in the district as well.
And have those been forwarded to the CPC? Because again, just like the other ones, when we have that meeting, I wanna hear what they have to say, because even though they kind of already talked about it with the new, some of those new information, so I'm assuming they've been forwarded to them.
So they, the planner is aware of them, but I talked to town council today, and while we customarily just administratively forward them along, he suggested that the board vote to refer them to the CPC, would be all four of these. I would not suggest referring the seven that I put in the administrative list unless you're prepared to be the sponsor of them.
No.
So you may not wanna refer those articles at this point in time.
No.
But for these four, I, I did show him the agenda for tonight's meeting that referenced the warrant articles, and I asked if it would be appropriate for that vote, if we'd be able to take that vote to refer these four articles to the planning commission. He did say yes.
Does he refer to them?
Refer them, refer them for hearing.
Okay.
They would be referred to them anyway, because they have to consider, make a recommendation because it's zoning bylaws.
So, so that, that's what I saw, but apparently it's more than administrative, this should be an action type warrant.
Because, I know, but if a citizen petition is, is certified and put into the warrant, the planning commission would have to have a public hearing on them anyway.
Well, we'll do them one better. So would the, would it read something like, you know, we, I don't know, how would a motion read?
The motion would read to refer the four citizens' petition zoning bylaw amendments to the planning commission for a hearing.
Can I have a motion for someone to repeat what Mr. Gobero just had? Please?
I'll just, run me just a second, what you said.
I don't think you have, someone of us has to.
Someone could say something.
That's it? Any further discussion? Should be a second?
You need a second.
Oh.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Walner. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Just as, by way of information as to why three of the four were submitted as citizens' petitions, I'm the first one on the petition, citizens' petition to put it in there, and the rationale for my doing so is exactly what we are looking at tonight in relation to the ones that are on the list put forth by the town administrator for our consideration. There's been a lack of certainty, and in my estimation, a lack of leadership to ensure that our community has an opportunity to come into compliance with the MBTA zoning act. And the only way that I could assure that that was going to happen, because I couldn't necessarily, I, I know I couldn't count on the planning commission, because we have four members sitting here saying, sign an action plan. Go ahead, exercise your prerogative, board, we're not, four of us are not in favor of it. And in listening to and watching on NORCAM, the planning commission meeting, I can, Mr. Pierce is taking a great leadership role in trying to get TES, to get people to have something to consider. But even as recently as Tuesday night, the planning commission could not come to a consensus to even forward these to us for consideration. The filing deadline for a citizens' petition was today at four o'clock.
That's because one of the members.
So you took it into your own hands.
What's that?
Could be good for you.
Well, the thing is, as I said, I believe there's a lack of leadership, both there and here. I can't count on us putting forth, from what I've heard from the majority here.
We're gonna throw it back.
He said, from what I've heard from the majority here at this point, is we're gonna rely on the planning commission to come up with some plan for the town to come into compliance. They sat right there and said they had no intentions of doing so, even though they would listen to the community, and listen to have some public hearings on it, but not, four of them out of five said that they weren't interested in putting forth anything for consideration for the town meeting to consider in recommending. They wouldn't be recommending anything. So to me, that's not leadership, and that doesn't give this town an opportunity, again, based upon new information being provided in relation to that lawsuit that was passed, the law being constitutional, and I need to come into compliance, which was not there in October, to move forward. And without them moving it forward, I can't rely on them to do so.
But Mr. O'Leary would.
They said so. And then I can't rely upon, excuse me, no, and I, again, I cannot, I cannot.
Hold on.
I cannot rely upon the majority of this board at this particular point in time to humor me and ensure that we have something on there for the public to consider, a town meeting to consider.
You, you know the rules better than me. These have to be at town meetings, or we can't get rid of them, they're citizens' petitions.
And that's why it's here, because I couldn't be assured, I could not be assured based upon previous statements of members of this board in the previous vote two weeks ago to consider filing suit on this thing, that these are gonna be there. The town has a right to make a final determination as to whether they wanna be in compliance or not, and we were not providing them that, nor was the planning, excuse me, nor was the planning commission. Again, so I think it's patently unfair, and again, whether they. Again, so I think it's patently unfair, and again, whether they go, whether they pass or they don't pass is incidental to me. But it is, we need to provide this town, the town meeting, an opportunity to comply and we weren't doing that. So the only way I could do that was to offer citizens petitions.
Please.
So that this board has to put it on the article, has to put it in the warrant, and it has to be considered at town meeting. Because I couldn't count on us to do it and I certainly can't count on the planning commission to do it.
In all fairness to them, Mr. O'Leary.
I'm sorry.
Two of the member, two of the members, it wasn't four, two of the members made it very clear that since the Milton decision, they were looking at it differently. Mr. Pierce and Mr. Rudolph, they both, so it wasn't a four, like it wasn't.
Mr. Pierce had been in favor of it all along.
So that, yes, but what I mean is, so it wasn't, but as of right now, what we just need to vote on is we would like through the affirmation of what Mr. Gobert just discussed, through Mr. Eichmann, and, and I've said all along, and again, I don't know if I have the votes for this. It should be the CPC that also weighs in on this, and then at that point, if, we'll take it from there. So that, that's what the motion is on, um, Mr. Massey, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I'd just like to, I'd just like to make a few comments. One, you should recuse yourself, Mr. O'Leary, um, cause you were the first signature on all these. Those leaders that you're talking about, those are elected officials, the same way you got put in. You know, you constantly are going after the CPC.
I'm not going after them.
I'm just saying, they are elected officials, so you can't force your opinion to make them vote in your, in, in your favor. You can't.
I'm not looking to make them.
They're elected officials, they got thousands of people behind them.
Hold on, wait a minute.
Yeah, please, I'm waiting twenty-five minutes for you to go.
It wasn't twenty-five, but.
About twenty-two. You're not only not respecting the people's vote, you're not even respecting your own colleagues of the elected officials' votes. I'm, I'm just a little confused, I, you took this into your own hand, to me, it's like someone who got their candy taken from them and just wants to, give me my candy back. You can't take the loss. If I supported something and I was steadfast on supporting something and I was really passionate about it, if I was at a town meeting and the people said no, I would respect it in my way and say, hey, gave it a shot, it is what it is. But you're trying to save the town by, by yourself. You've not only taken a no from town meeting, you've not only taken a no from the CPC that you're now gonna go and do it yourself and walk around and get signatures. That's fine, but I want you to know that the people will know that this is the backstory, you know, because it's, it's a shame, it's a shame, and you feel the need to get your way, I, I wanna, I wanna emphasize, I wanna sympathize with you, but I, Mr. O'Leary, I just, you've beaten a dead horse. Thank you.
So.
Let me, let me just respond, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion, please?
First of all, as far as respecting the people's decision at town meeting, alright?
I'm just saying.
As far as respecting the people's decision at town meeting, they did not have all the sufficient information to make an informed decision at the time. First of all, they weren't, they did not, alright?
How many, no, 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 please, I'm gonna give you.
And again, there were, there were a number of people, and I, and I know you, you're listening to one group of people here, but there were another group of people in this community who had reservations and wanted to hear what the final decision from the Supreme Judicial Court was gonna be as far as the legality of the law. That wasn't determined, that wasn't determined until January. Peoples have a, have a right to understand that it is now the law, it's statute, and you have to comply. And if you don't comply, there are penalties associated with it.
Almost Rockland was.
Pardon me?
Almost Rockland, I mean Rockport was.
Brockport, they get dismissed, twice.
They can re, they can.
But anyway, so the townspeople at the time, first of all, was given false information and not giving all the information. It didn't have access to all the information because the court had not made a decision.
We're all at home.
Something has changed, something has, excuse me, something has changed, right? There was no court decision. And again, those same group of people voted no, do not raise any money to defend the position, and yet three members of the board decided to spend the money. Alright?
Okay.
So, no, so anyway, things have changed significantly. And people have a right to make a well-informed decision based upon all the information that's available now, whether they wanna comply or not. To withhold that opportunity, which is what the planning commission has been doing, and what you're prepared to do apparently because you don't wanna bring it up again, you don't wanna give people the choice to come into compliance, is that true? Is that true or no? Oh, no, that's all, that's all this does, that's all this does.
We're not gonna.
We're not gonna.
As far as, as far as losing the battle or losing the, the issue, that's not the case with me. To me, the town people in town meeting should have the right, and we have an obligation to get it to them, to make a firm decision.
We all did.
No, we did not, because they didn't have that information on the legal case.
Okay.
They didn't have it.
That's fine.
Did they, is that important, is that an important piece of information to have?
You know what, hold on, hold on, stop, no, stop, stop, stop.
They now have that information, they can make an informed decision.
Please, please stop, I'm gonna reset the meeting.
As I said. As I said.
No, please stop.
It's been a lack of leadership and a lack of certainty.
Please stop, Mr. O'Leary, come on, give me a break.
So that's all.
Give me a break.
It's the first time in fifty years that I've felt the need to bring a citizen petition forward because this board wouldn't bring something forward, and that board over there refuses to allow the townspeople enough information to make an informed decision. The decision they make, I, I'm fine with it, yes or no, but at least it'll be based upon information that's available and the best information that they could possibly make an informed decision on.
The mayor took it to his hands, don't worry, you got it.
So, you know, so I'm sorry if you're uncomfortable.
Discussion's over.
I'm sorry if you're uncomfortable.
But I wanna address.
No, no, hold on, what, I'm gonna give you one final word, and if not, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn and we're gonna just end the meeting.
There is a motion on the floor.
Yes, but after that, the next one's gonna be to adjourn, or I'm just gonna convince people to walk out.
I think I need that motion repeated.
Mr. Massey, please. No, no, please, if you. All those in favor of the motion?
I need, I need the motion repeated.
Re, please reread it, Mr. Gobert.
I think that the record.
I'd like to recuse.
There's no need for me to recuse myself. And I would hope that I wouldn't even have to vote anyway, but there's no need for me to recuse myself, there's no personal financial interest of mine in this at all, not at all.
Mr. Gobert, go ahead.
So I, the motion was to refer the four citizen petition zoning bylaw amendments to the community planning commission for public hearings.
All those in favor?
No, I don't know what the citizens petition is.
What it, what it means is that the CPC gets to weigh in on things.
I get it, but what is the, is the petition for, maybe you can weigh in, cause you wrote it.
All four of them?
Is it?
All three, three.
Is it for?
One is different.
Is it for Martin's Landing?
But what about that one, it's not for all four of them?
It's for the exact things we pretty much voted on last year.
Okay, so it's for Martin's Landing?
Yes, that one.
Change of Martin's Landing zoning to multi-family by right.
Can I tell you exactly what it is? Can I tell you exactly what it is?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was, I was just speaking a second, Mr. O'Leary.
I mean, you're guessing.
Go ahead.
If you don't wanna know, I can tell you exactly what it did.
And I wrote, go ahead.
No, I didn't write, I didn't write.
Who wrote?
Uh, town council, I mean, it.
It's the one from last year.
Exactly what was presented at the October town meeting with two exceptions. If you recall, this board supported two amendments, which was, one was to allow for age restriction, fifty-five plus as a right in the bylaw. And the second one was to restrict the number of units to those that are currently there. In other words, no more units than what's already there, which is in excess of what's required by the MBTA. Those are the only differences that have been inserted there.
Just curious.
Substantive differences from what was presented, because it allows by right age restriction of fifty-five plus, which protects people at Martin's Landing, and caps it, it was at nine hundred and eight units. So that, so that none of those, so that none of those units can be simplified, and they can't put any more units there than what's there now. That's what it is.
I wanna, I need to see.
But hold on, I, I need to back up to some, no, please, please stop, everyone. Right now, it's just to go over it. You, it is not in the agenda to have a full-blown dialogue. That is in the next three, we're gonna do this again. And I, I'm telling you, to the tone deaf in this room, that both sides are sick of both sides going at each other like this. Everyone here wants to tell me of how they got the ear of the town, let me tell you who's got the ear of the town. And I hear from both sides that every time MBTA comes up, it turns into a war. So now, we're either gonna rescind this motion and move on, or we're gonna vote. And if you respect anything we do here as a board, you're gonna please humor me on this. We went way off the cuckoo's nest tonight on this, it was not supposed to be a discussion about this. Again. All those in favor?
I have a question about the motion, it's about the motion.
Same here, that's what I was doing.
And please read it one more time.
No, I, he, he read it, what I wanna know is what is the alternative, if it's not going to CPC?
It's going to the, it's.
That's the motion, right, to give it to CPC?
Well, we're.
If they fails, what happens?
Can you repeat what Mr. Eichmann recommended from twenty minutes ago of why I should have just ignored his advice and continue?
He, he recommended that the board actively vote to refer the zoning bylaw amendment petitions, I'm only talking about the citizen petitions, to the planning commission for a hearing. In my ten years here, we've never done that, it's just happened administratively, but he recommended that that's a step that we take.
That's it, we're not forcing them to do anything, they can do whatever they want.
Mr. Chair, I just wanna point out that these citizens petitions came in at five o'clock, an hour before our meeting. So my apologies if there are maybe some board members that wanna figure out what we're, what we're voting on.
It's not a figure out, it, we're all, we're, we're not voting on anything, we're not voting to support, we're just.
We're voting to, we're voting to say, can the CPC please take a look? Thank you, that's it, and we just had a half-hour discussion, it had nothing to do with that, both sides.
They were filed at ten eighteen AM, by the way, ten o'clock this morning. It's not five.
Would you like to vote on the motion, or can I, should I ask Mrs. Gonzalez and Mr. Walner to both rescind it and then we can just move on?
I will rescind them, if there is one.
All those in favor of sending, or just letting the CPC by text message, email, pigeon pa, pigeon carrier know that these are here, can you please talk about it at one of your meetings? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
What poll is the vote?
Four, no, you said yes to it.
Four, yes, one abstained.
Abstained, four and one abstained. Mr. Gobert, oh, is there any other town warrant articles?
No.
Seasonal licenses. Is there, these are just run-of-the-mill, just for that, like, sell hot dogs?
They are routine, um, a number of these licenses have been in effect for a number of years. They deal with seasonal licenses for the two golf courses in town, and then also the transient vendor Robert Connors who sells flowers out of the Horseshoe parking lot during the springtime. And all of that paperwork's in order.
Thank you. Mr. Massey, do you have the motions, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the general on-premises seasonal wine and malt beverage license for Golf Facilities Management Incorporated DBA. Hillview Snack Bar to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, subject to all regulatory, regulatory department requirements.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the Comer Chil, Victor license for Golf Facilities Management Incorporated DBA. Hillview Snack Bar to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the transient vendor license for the sale of flowers, Christmas trees, et cetera, two twenty-six Main Street for Robert Connors, fifty-eight Lyman Street, Wilbur, Mass. To expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Massey, you can just continue on.
Mr. Chair, I move to renew the seasonal club wine and malt beverages license for the Thompson Club Incorporated DBA Pro Shop. Two A Mid-Iam Drive to expire November thirty of twenty twenty-five, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion?
Is that supposed to read December thirty, uh, November thirty?
It's supposed to be December.
No, it's not November.
It's not November, good? Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the seasonal club all alcohol license for Thompson Country Club DBA TCC Grill to Mid-Iam Drive. To expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the Comer Chil license for Thompson Club. DBA TCC Grill to Mid-Iam Drive to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Meeting minutes, can I bring it?
Yeah, please, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session meeting minutes for the January sixth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, further discussion? Car before the horse, aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the March third, twenty twenty-fifth meeting.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Gobert.
And don't report this evening.
Awesome, Mr. Massey.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn this meeting at ten fifty-one PM.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion?
Can I just ask one question?
You did this last time in adjourn.
This is just, there's dates that are coming up, there's like all these dates that are coming up, I just wonder if we can review those real quick, not just the select board, like the.
Excuse me, there is one date, thank you, for once, I'm sorry, for once, I, you know, um, there is one date that, um, I forgot to bring up in board members before you reminded me. That the twenty-second that we had out there with a question mark does not work, and I know Mrs. Gonzalez, I believe, said that the following week doesn't work, but I don't know if she.
Be too upset about, if she had a mishap on meeting, the last one, but does, um.
This is April?
Yeah, this Tuesday, so it doesn't overlap, this Tuesday, the, is it the twenty-ninth? Does that work for people? Mr. Massey, does that work for you?
Tuesday the twenty?
Yes.
I can do that. As opposed to the twenty-second?
Yes.
I will be in Naples, I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's candidate's night.
So.
What?
Oh, it's candidate's night.
So what do we?
Okay, no, good, sorry.
But again, when are we, when are we actually meeting, I mean, we're talking about meeting on the seventh.
I'm going that.
And then if, wait till the twenty-ninth?
Okay.
Why weren't you doing the Monday?
Wait, you wanna do the Monday instead? That's the school committee, right?
Monday the twenty-eighth, I mean, that's.
Well, that, that's still. Between putting the warrant to bed here and everything else, when, when is, when is the school vacation week, I'm sorry?
It's the week before, the week of the twenty-first.
It is the week of the twenty-first?
Yeah.
Another option is to meet the week of the fourteenth, so you'd be reading the seven, week of the seventh, and then week of the fourteenth.
I mean, you, you tell us what's gonna be on our agenda, you know, as far as, do you wanna go from the seventh of April until the twenty-ninth of April? You can say yes if you really do wanna wait, but I mean, I'm just thinking.
Yeah, I mean, if we're able to meet, so the, the challenge with the week of the twenty-eighth is we meet again on the fifth, the next week, so there's back-to-back meeting, either way you end up with back-to-back meetings. It's a matter of when you want them, um, or when they make sense. I don't have any problem with the meeting on the week of the fourteenth.
So won't be a full board on the twenty-first or the twenty-eighth?
Well, twenty-first is, is school vacation.
And that's a legal holiday, we can't.
And that's legal holiday.
So that's.
If you go the week before, the fourteenth.
So we're talking about the fourteen. We're talking the fourteenth.
I think we should do it sooner than later, in case we have to squeeze something else in between.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that would take you to Monday the four, or Tuesday the fifteenth, if you don't wanna conflict with the Monday school committee meeting.
Well, that's fine on Monday, so you, so what would the dates be in April instead?
For, instead of, it would, so it would be the seventh, that's a regular meeting, and then we were talking about, instead of the twenty-second, it would be either the fourteenth or the fifty.
Okay, so we just go back-to-back and then have a longer break?
Then you have the conflicts in between.
I can do the fourteen. It's just, Massey, can you guys do the fourteenth?
Of April?
Yep. Again, I just highlight, I, I know there was concern at one point about conflicting.